Good morning, everybody. Thank you for coming. It's nine o'clock. Our call to meeting is ordered. Commissioner Trippleton, can you please, in the frame of plea, would you please?
My pleasure. Good morning, thank you for this great day and thank you for the rain and thank you for the community, Lord, and what it means to my family and to everyone here. We ask that you guide us in our decisions, Lord, and do us best for the county. I mean, I'm praying, hang on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laurie, make sure everybody in the hall is standing in.
Okay.
All right, need consideration to approve today's agenda with an issue.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Seven.
Mr. Romeo made a motion, Mr. Warren seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Any consideration to approve the minutes from the May eleventh, twenty twenty-one meeting?
Motion.
Mr. Trippleton, any motion?
Second.
Mr. Wood seconded. Any discussion? Minutes? No, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to appearances from the corner, Mr. James Strickland to discuss the morgue. Building of the morgue.
Thank you. I appreciate you all letting me come and for you today. I'll pass out pictures of what we're proposing here. Again, I want to thank you all for letting me come and for you. I've been the coroner of Scranton County for the last thirty-one years. The coroner's office is not very much a profit building office, but we don't go out and do anything, anyway. I've written a letter to you all, and I think, I hope you all have it before you.
Yes, I read it.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read that. But the highlights of it is that I want to propose that that we moved the morgue from the, from the local hospital to a building that we would purchase here in Scranton County. Move the building to the campus of the sheriff's office. And I had talked to Sheriff Kyle, and he said that would be fine with him. And you see what the building is, it's about ten foot by twenty foot, about seven foot prefabricated building. It will be purchased from a local dealer. In addition to buying the building after it's purchased and delivered by the seller and set in a permanent location at the sheriff's office grounds, it'd be necessary to insulate the building and wire it and do some painting to it before we could use it. As we get all of that done, we'd like to move the refrigeration unit which the county owns that is the hospital now and some other equipment that the county owns there in the morgue area of the hospital. And all this labor for the work, for the insulation, wiring and so forth, what we've done by Mr. J. Meadows and his staff or his crew, they, you know, be friendly with him. I told him also, and he said that they could probably do that for us. And you see in the letter that what I've proposed here, I've got some effects and figures for you for the building and a quote from a local hardware store for the materials to use for the insulation and the wiring and so forth, the painting. This was the, this proposal from the hardware store was done May the thirteenth. Prices are at high, increasing a little bit with building materials and so forth. Anyway, so the total on May eighteen for this building and the labor and so forth would be seventy-six hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety cents. Also, as you know, the coroner's office has probably the smallest budget of the Indian departments in Scranton County, so I respectfully request that you all consider this very seriously for the betterment of the county and operation of the coroner's office.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. You all have any questions for, Mr. James?
I'd have one. James, I'm struggling to, why, why we need the hospital? What, what problem with the hospital?
Well, some of the cases that we have are not too pleasant. Especially the ones where we might find it's been deceased for several days or a week or so. We've had some problems with I don't know how to put it, you know, if you're something.
Trial order.
Uh, yeah.
Trial order.
We've, one particular case we had a couple of years or so ago, just kind of disrupted the operation of the hospital. And it took a good while to resolve that. We finally got the man moved out of the morgue, and we had an ankle the other day, he was about the same condition, and I didn't even boot him out there, so.
Is there something wrong with the coolers?
No, 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 there's nothing wrong with it, it's just it's just, it's just that way. If you find one that's been, been out, been dead a while, out in the hot, oh, you know, you know what happens. That's, that's one of the reasons, and then if we moved it out to the sheriff's campus, it would be a little more secure. A secure area. Wouldn't be as many folks to figure out the secrets or things like that.
Thank you, Mr. James. Appreciate it.
Can we, can we have further discussion on this? Like, can we?
Now or later?
Later. But can we table it and let's have further discussion on this and, I mean, not, not that I think it's a bad idea, but, um, but, you know, and nothing against this building, but it, this, these buildings don't last. I mean, they're not long-term buildings, and, um, and before we go spending the money, um, it's my opinion that before we go spending this additional money, we need something that's gonna last, I mean, not to mention, we have buildings around the county that we could possibly look at instead. Mr. Strickland, instead of build, buying this building or doing this, I think there's a couple of buildings, there's the, that learning center back there on Pine Street. I think it's empty. It's a block building, um, so and I just want to make sure, like, I mean, there's nothing wrong with the coolers or anything like that, so, um, there's no other issues. So I'll make a motion to table.
Ms. LaDina, I'm, I need to put you on the spot. Do you mind weighing in just a hair for us and give us your opinion?
Um, James and I have worked together with this. We just take the process, we need to work on the process a little bit. Um, unfortunately, you know, it is a county-owned cooler, so our stand from the hospital was that anybody that's put in there needs to go through James or the coroner's office or the deputy coroner. Um, and that's gonna always happen in the past. So, for us, the morgue being in our hospital, and this is what James and I talked about this week, is not a problem. The problem is typically the process. And we need to make sure that, that we call the process where he's alerted anytime anybody brings a body there. The state does, the state says that I'm not responsible, or we, we, the hospital's not responsible for a body there. We are responsible for knowing a body's there. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm not responsible for the body in there, but I am responsible for knowing that the body's there.
I feel like it's a communication problem right now.
Sometimes, but where the morgue is, you know, it's, sometimes it is a communication problem.
Yeah, I think that's what we were looking at. Thank you, Ms. LaDina.
Thank you.
Well, I'll second your table.
Please, next one.
I'm gonna have to table it and get some more information and come back and, on a table and write. Yeah, just put it back on the agenda and
That's correct.
Examine some of the different building options, but if I understand, if you do move what you wanted on the sheriff's office compound for security reasons.
Right.
Okay. Make the compound's not where it was. All right.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say, uh, let it know, Commissioner Lawrence is on the, uh, on the phone, speaking phone. Did you hear everything, Commissioner?
I did.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted the folks to know that you're not speaking there, but you're here on the phone.
All right. Any other, anything else on that? No, let me go on the new business, considerations to fill a non-public representative for Scranton County to serve them because of regional permission.
Mr. Chairman, I reelect Rick Freeman.
That's right.
And he said he would be glad to serve his county, continue to serve his county.
Seven, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to reappoint Rick Freeman?
Yes.
Second, Commissioner Romeo made a motion, Commissioner Warren seconded. Any discussion? See, it's hard to find somebody willing to go to all the meetings.
Yeah, exactly, yes.
So I really appreciate somebody taking their time. All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Any consideration to fill a term on the defect board? Laurie, you have?
Uh, yeah, I actually was able to, I talked to Debbie Brown, who actually spoke with Ms. Gussie Hunter, and she stated that she was willing to serve another term on that board and has to be reappointed. We do not have any other applicants.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion for Commissioner Warren to reappoint Ms. Gussie Hunter?
Yes.
You have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Romeo. All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Consideration to fill a term on the hospital authority board?
Mr. Chairman, that's, um,
Um, we have another applicant who didn't leave his application in on time. Um, but David Bodford, we have spoke with him, he is actually the current chairman of that board. Um, so I asked that y'all at least reappoint him today. Um, because the hospital board is having their first meeting next week.
I mean, excuse me, it's five
Yes.
here. Talked to David last night, and he's willing to chair that meeting as the current chairman. He doesn't envision remaining on the board for a length of time for health reasons, but, um...
He's agreed to serve for the time till we can get a new board acclimate him as well.
How many vacancies are, are there?
Um, there are currently three left now.
He suggested Hobson Parker as potentially, and Hobson would be willing to serve.
Yes, I talked with Mr. Parker yesterday, and he stated that he was willing to serve, um, he is out of the state. I emailed him an application. Um, and he said he would try to get it back to me about this morning, but I did not get it back this morning, so, um...
So is there any, is there any, um...
I don't have any other applicants other than, or...
But is there any reserve towards Ms. Glisson who submitted an application, if we have three open seats? Is there reserve?
Yeah, I'll make sure to, uh... Reappoint, reappoint David. Reappoint David Bodford and Hobson.
Yeah.
And Hobson would be the third, but we'll wait, if you want to wait until the next meeting with Parker, because yeah, do what you do.
I'll, I'll entertain whatever motion you can.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I like that, man. So we, we reappoint what we got here then. Uh, Commissioner Glisson, Dorothy Glisson, you said, and Pop, uh, David Bodford and Hobson Parker. Then we'll be the three, so we'll be fill that spot.
Yes, that will fulfill the hospital.
I, I just want to make sure that we have consideration for Mr. Bodford, that he's, he's willing to do it temporarily until we get it all situated, so I don't want to tie him to another...
No, he said that, Mr. County Attorney said he just detoxed him, yeah.
When he ready to resign, we'll bring him back to the full board for a...
Okay.
That's a motion, that's a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I second that motion.
Motion on the floor, to appoint, if we can do them all three in one motion, all right?
Yes, sir. Yes.
David Bodford, Hobson Parker, and Dorothy Glisson to the hospital board. Motion, Commissioner Warren seconded. Commissioner Romeo, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Moving on, consideration to fill term on Chris, Keith Scranton beautiful board? Laurie, do we have any?
I spoke with Ms. Diane, at this time she's asking that Danielle Brown and Catherine Yules be reappointed. She does have three vacancies on this board at this time um, that she is having a lot of difficulty getting people to volunteer for. Um, so, we actually have three expired terms that will expire at the end of this month. It's Amber Smith, Danielle Brown, and Catherine Yules, but Amber Smith has resigned from the board, so at this time she's only, she's recommended that Danielle and Ms. Catherine be reappointed at this time. We do not have any applicants currently for that board. Um, and she has asked that the board, if y'all have anybody in mind that would be willing to serve on that board, she just having a hard time keeping people on that board.
That board has a lot of people.
It does.
So does it have, has that many people? So where are the, where are the bylaws or, or whatever, I mean, the structure of that board that tells us how many people we got to have?
I don't have it. I don't know what it was about.
Can we, maybe, maybe we can get that and look at that, and then, because we may, we may have people on this floor, it, the number, we may not need to appoint anybody else.
Well, you probably need to, um, to consider amending
Okay.
their term. If that's, if you decide to reduce the number.
Correct.
I need a motion to reappoint Daniel Brown, Catherine Yules.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Warren made a motion, seconded. Mr. Dixon, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. All right, consideration to fill term on the planning of zoning commission. And we do have a recommendation from the chair there, Mr. Emerson Scott and Gary Wynn, that's correct.
Yes.
They've been on the board quite a while, man.
They have.
They do a good job. They're all always with him.
So, Mr. Chairman, let's keep it rolling.
I second.
Commissioner Warren made a motion to appoint Mr. Scott to run. Commissioner Romeo seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Consideration to approve the cost of adding additional information to the county website. I think that's one of our website fees, so we need to go with that.
Is that one fifty, Lord?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifty, no, I'm sorry.
And it's a one-time fee, um...
I've seen it, you're still looking at it.
Yeah, I, I, well, I picture all the correspondence that we've had with Hunter, um, me and Commissioner Love it, and it's, um... Commissioner Willis had inquired about adding some things to the website, and this will be the cost to add some of those right now.
And the, um, call up with Laurie, I talked to them also, this is a one-time fee.
Yes.
So on that part, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
All right.
You make a motion for the one fifty?
The fifteen hundred dollars.
Oh, okay.
It's fifteen hundred dollars, one-time fee.
All right, have a motion.
That's what a bill out for, so that...
Yeah.
Motion, Commissioner Romeo, to, and that's with the CRC?
Yes.
Contract CRC for fifteen hundred dollars.
Make the letter, make the letter, second.
Any discussion?
Okay, so when I, what I had originally requested was, there were some people in the county who showed an interest in wanting a a map placed on our county website that shows the voting districts and the addresses to the polling places. Um, I did not know it was gonna cost fifteen hundred dollars, so, I mean, I know...
It is not just that, it, it includes that, it, it includes everything that, um, um...
Just show the road conditions, okay?
It'll show road conditions, it'll show everything that's going on in the county, in addition to your map, uh, the voting sites. It'll be a ongoing thing of everything that needs to be going, um, on there. If I'm not mistaken, I think, um, people from the county can come in and actually ask us to put thing on it, on, on the website.
On top of the, will there be an additional fee on top of the fifteen hundred to add that?
No.
Okay.
Commissioner Lovey checking his ears, so I'm gonna get the word on this, so, Rick.
Yeah, um, Laurie and Commissioner Love it were more into it, I just got into it because they were having a, a little problem contacting the CRC, so she had to call me, and I definitely, within an hour, got her to answer.
I think this will allow us to add more information that we want. Like, it just has to be filled out on actual programming of the website, the programmer, they're just paying programmer for the time the programmer's out for, so adding for us, so we can input information.
Correct. I just want to make sure that it's not gonna be a recurring charge every time you want to have it, and like, this fifteen hundred dollars is for these three things, and then anything going forward is gonna be more. And then, the other thing is, I want to make sure that we don't already, um, the Q Public website has a lot of abilities to do mapping and stuff like that, and I don't, I just want to make sure that we're not, that there's not a way to do it over there. I mean, I'm not sure about, maybe if there's a, a layer on the Q Public to do a map, and then you can embed that one on our, on our website and the like. I just want to make sure that we don't have a recurring, like, if fifteen hundred dollars is gonna, like, with these three things plus whatever else is gonna come up, then okay, to a reasonable, um, extent, obviously.
As being on the CRC, um, now on vice chair, as if you're my first, um, I assure you the fifteen hundred dollars is a one-time yearly fee.
Okay. Yearly fee?
Yearly fee.
Yearly fee?
Yeah, one time, one time.
That's one time. One time building.
Okay, all right.
I think it's reasonable to assume, brother, that, that in the future, if you add something of significance that requires changing, it's gonna require...
It's gonna require, it's, yes, 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 it's reasonable, that's just reasonable, yes.
I don't want to misunderstand that this is never gonna be charged, although we will be charged under that.
Correct.
We good with that, Commissioner Love it?
Sound right to me.
Sound right.
And we have control over it.
Yes.
Any other questions, discussion? No, all in favor? Both?
No, I'm, I'm in favor.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, moving on, considerations approved on a separate account for some LMEG money. Laurie, can you explain?
Um, you can, or I mean, I'll turn it over to Hager, but this is a recommendation from our, um, consultant, Doug Eves, um, that he would like to see us separate that money out, that way it will be easier to show than our continued efforts with the S D S.
That and, uh, as an accounting manager, that's a recommendation from our county, um, is worried so that, um, you, although some of the money that you use for, um, road construction may come from SPOLOs, depending on what the SPOLOs feds. Uh, there are requirements of the SPOLOs, that SPOLOs money not be segregated into another account, you have to keep it there. So, uh, it's, it's just a, it's just an entry on the charter accounts, not creating a separate bank account, it's, it's a, a charter entry. That money would be accounted for there, it would be spent from there. Money from SPOLOs would be spent from SPOLOs. Just so we're clear about that, when I talk about moving SPOLOs money into the, to the LMEG account.
Just regular accounting.
Just accounting, it was accounting clear.
All right.
So, Mr. Chairman.
That's motion, Commissioner Warren, to establish an account. Commissioner Trippleton seconded, any more discussion?
About the resolution.
About the resolution, as presented, that's what I was Dixon said, about the, thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. All right. Moving on, consideration to approve an application for a twenty-one LMEG safety action plan and, uh, project list. I think Laurie can't touch it for me, this is maybe some grant money or a little bit of matching in it for striking.
We done this several years ago, um, actually, our Jimmy Brown, our district, um, contact, contacted me and said that the money became available again this year, so it was kind of a quick process. If you see attached, I talked to Roger, and they gave us the, a list of the projects that they would like to complete with this. It's usually as safety measures, like to do restriping, rumble strips, rate pay, rate payments, stuff like that. They take, V O T sends us a report of our concerned areas in the county that are maybe causing a safety risk, um, and then Roger goes down that list and picks which ones he thinks are in the most need. So that's what, that was based off of, we're eligible to receive approximately around seventy-five thousand dollars for this. Of course, we would have the thirty percent match, but we can utilize, um, SPOLO funds for our thirty percent match like we do with our regular LMEG.
Do we have a timeframe to do this?
Um, they gave us a timeframe in the beginning of, that it had to be under contract by June thirtieth, but that, that time has been extended because they extended the application period, so... Um, but actually, this is one of the projects, actually, we talked to Littlefield, this is something Roger talked to, and he stated that this was prob, a project they could have done within just a few days, all of them, if they were to get the bid. They, you know, it was a pretty quick turnaround. And we could also maybe utilize our LMEG and the paving of those three roads off route that's supposed to start in the next couple of weeks if the weather holds up. Um, but we could also see about them doing that while they're here as well.
Would that be, uh, potholes, would that be in that safety brim?
No, it's on here, it's kind of, he's talking about striping around it, where you're not gonna drive around.
Put a big circle around it.
We definitely need to get new potholes.
I mean, you fix it, three months later, it's back.
It's back, yeah.
Process is. So, I guess the answer is no, you can't use that for a pothole.
Yeah.
No, this was just some kind of deal, it's like a safety, it's, well, it's just lines and, I mean, stripes. On the road, it didn't really have anything to do with our standard LMEG. Like, this was just a, something that comes along every now and then to re-stripe roads and stomp on the strips.
We, we need re-striping, we gotta stomp on it.
Well, it, it was pretty restrictive of what you could do with it, but something needed to be done anyway.
I have a motion to enter into to approve this application.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren made a motion. Commissioner Dixon seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, consideration to renew the agreement with the H E T for the rental of the Dole Education Facility. Something we've been doing for years.
Doing.
Nothing's changed, I don't think, in the agreement. As we're, same thing we've been doing for twelve months, one dollar.
Yeah. I think they have an option to do it and exercise their option, so you're really getting notified.
We don't need to do anything.
Right, no, to do anything except you accept it.
Do we need a motion to accept it, or do we just accept it?
I would give a motion on, on, yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're motion.
Commissioner Romeo accepted the renewal agreement to H E T. Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Trippleton, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. All right, moving on, consideration to adopt the resolution pertaining to bidding and purchasing. Uh, nothing more. Say, is Hager, you talking about where we are or where we were?
I believe that, uh, this resolution is actually previous to adoption, where we've not found a bid. Uh, I actually shared it, uh, several years ago. But we have under the power of given to us by the Constitution and the legislature, under home rule, the ability to amend even this, um, action that was adopted by the legislature. And I think that this gives you the greatest flexibility to decide what's best for people in Scranton County. Not everything requires competitive bidding, uh, not everything requires, uh, action by the board commissioners. Uh, I think you need to increase the amount that the county manager can deal with without having to apply to the board commissioner. Over five hundred dollars for sure, I think we've already done it, uh, but we need to redo it because we haven't found it.
Well, more or less, the, the Allison pointed out. Well, more or less, the, the House has pointed out it was one from nineteen forty-nine, is that correct?
That's what this is about.
This is a. I understand that, but it more or less says the same thing that this says, doesn't it?
No.
I mean, the, the five thousand is only.
No. It's, it's completely different. You're talking about the law that's currently on the books in comparison to this resolution?
Yes.
No, it's different.
No, it's completely different.
It don't give us an opt-out if you didn't wanna bid.
It, it allows the board to determine that competitive bidding is not required where it is deemed to be impractical, for the Ford County and, and where it's deemed to be in the best interest of the citizens. Uh, and, to, to bring it back to the board commissioners and, and require competitive bidding, I think that's what it is. Gives you the place to do it anyway.
Alright. Order of wishes.
Certainly, as it stated, uh, it is the intent of the resolution that competitive bidding is not required. And it's not required by state law except regarding highway construction or, or, or building construction. That's not required in, uh, in, in full of county to do that, it's required by state law for certain things, but county's not required to bid out service contracts. Get rid of that idea, you don't have to do that.
And that's what I've been saying all along, um, um, kind of turning to that, calling to my soul, that we didn't have to do that. That we need to do this, put it in, in a form of a motion, and, and that's what we need to do.
That's clear.
Yes. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, I make a motion that we, uh, adopt this.
A resolution.
Resolution that, you know, tang this.
Alright, we have a motion on four, Commissioner Warren, so I doubt the resolution as written. Second. Mr. Romeo, second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the current law says, the said board of commissioners shall be the purchasing agent of said county and that all purchases which amount to more than five hundred shall be made on bids, with the right reserved to re- reject all bids or on competitive quotations from two or more persons unless the majority of said board by formal votes shall adjudicate such procedure impractical. So the law says everything has to be bidded unless the board votes to say it's not practical. This resolution says the board resolved that competitive bidding is deemed to be impractical. And it, and it goes through the five thousand, but furthermore, it says further, it is the intent of this resolution that competitive bidding is not required for service contracts unless otherwise required by the act. So this says everybody has the right to bid unless the board says no. This says nobody has the right to bid unless the board says yes. They are fundamentally different.
Exactly.
Why?
For all purpose. To allow capabilities of the county to actually do business.
Why? You can do business, you can solicit bids, it gives opportunity to the people in the county. I'm not arguing that five hundred dollars is unreasonable. I'm not arguing that. Nineteen forty-nine it worked, twenty twenty-one it doesn't work, I'm not arguing about. But to take away these people's rights to be able to come to this county, to this board and say, hey, I can do that job, here's my qualifications, give me an opportunity. Why? Why would you take that away from the people?
For every project that comes up, uh, commissioner, you have the absolute right to request the board to acquire bidding. And that's what you should do.
We not taking it right away.
The law says they have the right right now. This resolution says they will not have the right. If you vote on this, they will not have the right.
This resolution says that they will have the right if you allow it.
Well, that's it, I mean, and it takes four, ain't that what it takes?
That's right.
Yeah.
So unless there's four to agree with it, they say no, then you, you taking away their due process.
No, you're not taking away their due process.
No, their, their opportunity.
Their due process and law.
There's, you're taking away their opportunity, because if you can't get four people, they don't get an opportunity. If you can't get four votes.
Don't you assume that.
They, they can't, they don't have the opportunity anymore, which one wants?
Yeah, but right now, you, one, two, three, four, five, six on the phone, you got seven pieces, like everybody pieces this guy. To do what's best for the beach for this guy, we can't, we can't, listen now, we can't sit here and say we don't get, get four votes to do it. We have to make the decision what's best, what we think, they don't like the city we made, then we, it's, it's the consequence behind it. But we have to make the decision going forward, and that's what we do, and I'd say a long time ago. It takes four to do anything, but we, I'm pretty sure everybody around this table is considered, you know what I mean? And they got the capital of best interest for their contingent. It's the same way when we had this land fear coming here. It took four votes that we didn't want it, and we didn't get it. It'll be the same way going forward.
You can vote on it.
It would, uh, it, it, it would've come to a vote, we would've voted.
So, so let me ask something. The land clearing on these trash sites, who did that? Who cleared the land in these trash sites? The red farmer? Who did it?
Is that Ro?
Our county Cruz did it.
Ruben here.
Um, one.
There was one that was.
We had one.
A site from.
Right.
People's farm.
People's farm, I bet, okay.
I'm just asking.
And you, you did one, it was one, I didn't get this shit out there, and the reason why we did that is because of the backup.
I'm sure where the land.
Did Cruz did it?
Gary did one.
That's the one he did.
People's farm.
People's farm.
How long, we did one up here, and then never got it done.
Right.
And, and that's why we do Gary, to get it done.
And the controlling the land was just, it was just, it took you Gary to do it.
And that's a service contract? In essence, that's a service contract, 'cause they're providing a service? And so, let's say all of the sites, the county didn't do all of the sites, you know, we'll say, that, that's why this law exists. So everybody who clears land and does land, um, work in the county would've had an opportunity. Um, now, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and get into the middle, but honestly, the law, I'm sure Mr. Cruz was paid more than five hundred dollars for clearing that one site. And if the law had been applied properly at that time, everybody would've been given the opportunity. If the county had chosen to, to let somebody do all of the sites, that's an opportunity that these land clearers would've been given. That now, if you, you, if you vote on this resolution, it's going to require four people to give those people that opportunity.
I take the position that four people usually have a better chance of getting a heart.
I don't think so.
It's not letting this position take.
Okay, that's an opinion, Megan.
Yeah.
It's just an opinion.
Well, um, you, you mentioned home rule, so that will require what? If, if they vote to move forward on this, we're gonna have to, what is, what is the process under home rule? Yep.
As, as far as this is concerned, Commissioner, will I have to do anything like a vote?
So you don't have to vote on it, run it in the paper, and vote on it again?
But you have to run it in the paper, um, or changes to the, um, character of the, uh, of the commissioner, if you wanted to. To say, for example, eliminate a district, eliminate a commission, uh, that's gonna have to be written in, you've got the power to do that. Sort of like, I mean, just apologies, um, I can do everything under home rule, um, without having the right to leave the paper with the exception of changes to their charter. Board commissioners can do everything under home rule with the exception of essentially changing, uh, the law that created it. So if you change the character of the board, you've got the, you've got to follow, uh, the provisions of the constitution, article, uh, nine, section two, paragraph one. Uh, otherwise, uh, that's not required. The only time we've got to do, uh, this business of notifying, fitting it in the newspaper, writing it for sixty days and, uh, two different meetings is when you, an act legislation affecting the elective office or affecting the form of government of the county. That's the exact line from the constitution.
Hubert, I know this might be a hard question to answer, but on the June twenty eighth nineteen ninety-four meeting, where there was some purchasing policy procedures. I'm not sure how that plays into effect, and, you know, we've given department heads the ability to spend more than five hundred dollars, obviously. And we've given Lori the ability to spend up to five thousand dollars. That, was that part of that ninety-four thing?
This is what I, I, I think we get adopted, I just hadn't, I have drawn it up, but I just haven't seen it in a minute.
Yes, sir.
I don't have a signed copy of the minutes, I'll use a key.
I got you. So you think this resolution's already been adopted, and we're just covering our bases on it?
Yeah.
So it's your opinion, as a county attorney, that the passing of this resolution, we can, we can undo and therefore not follow this law?
Absolutely.
Okay, after. Um, well, where we are, this will more or less make whatever we're doing, whatever we've been doing, right.
You, you can't undo what you've already done.
We've already done it, but, yes, this is gonna clarify.
You think none of people's right?
About right.
Again, an opinion.
It isn't right. As it right now is.
It's all right.
And it's their right to bid it.
Alright. Any other discussion on where we're going with this?
Corey? Can you call the comment?
Probably don't have a comment.
I got a question.
Probably, probably don't have a comment here.
They don't have the right to comment this matter? So you're gonna, you're gonna confine, you're gonna confine any comment that they may have about this matter to, at the end of the meeting when it's irrelevant?
That's right.
Right.
This is not requiring, it does not require public hearing, please.
Okay.
Well, I, I'll say I feel, I, since it's still up for discussion, I think it's probably a good idea to do this. And I think we need, in fact, I think we need more discussion on it.
We're still discussing.
What's your biggest concern, man? The fairness of, I mean, what, what is, what is the reasoning of bidding? To get the fair's price and get people up to.
Amen. I'm good with, I'm good with the bidding, and I don't think this is will not have a bidding process.
But, but it gives us the right to choose who bids, or if we want to.
No, not who bids, what, what projects are bid, or what services are bid.
Let's feel this, the same difference, I don't wanna argue, I'm just telling you how I feel, I just don't think it's fair.
Yeah.
Just like we get, just like, and it kinda protects us because it keeps us from showing favoritism to anybody. So you get a contract to cut the courtyard, or Karen Rose or whatever, alright? Oh, well, let's get him, he's got a bunch of traps. But yet this guy may just start doing business or what have you, and he doesn't get the chance because this guy's already set up to go. I just thought, I just think we need to, I think we need to discuss it more. So that's my opinion, and I'm sure I'm going, I'm sure y'all already have four, so.
My, my biggest issue is, is that last line, you explicitly remove service. You, you explicitly remove service. Like, you know, and I just, I feel like this right here stems from the trash and protecting, um, the current trash situation. And I, I, I have a huge problem with that, because, you know, there are a lot of service jobs out there that should be afforded the right to bid. And this explicitly removes that. And it also, and, and the other thing I wanna say about this law, right now, this law protects people who are doing any type of construction. So the state law says construction up over a hundred thousand dollars. So this law kinda protects people from the five thousand mark, well, five hundred, but five thousand, five thousand mark up to the ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. It gives, it protects them as well. Construction. And service, that's grass cutting, that's land clearing, that's, um, AC installations, you understand? I mean, you know, you, you got a lot of things out there that there are a lot of people in this county, they, they do.
But you're under assumption that we didn't bid any of those things we talked about.
I, I didn't, no, no, I, I haven't assumed, the only thing that I had talked about as far as the bidding.
I mean, you just gave examples, I'm.
I, I'm just giving examples of service. The only thing that I know that you didn't bid was that trash. Because it's not in the minutes, you didn't vote to not bid it. And I know that it is the, your attorney's opinion that by signing the contract, you are in essence voting to not bid it, but, whatever, if that's, whatever.
Hubert, are you drawing a strike on what? One clear case, that, that last line is put in there in, uh, as a consideration of following the long line of cases that has made that clear in the state of Georgia. And, uh, I wanted it to be as clear in our resolution as it is in the laws of the state of Georgia. Determined by the Supreme Court of Georgia on multiple occasions.
Our current law says purchases, and the definition of purchases is to, with money, obtain a good or service. That is, so that included services.
Where we went into this, like, we were following the advice of our attorney for the last ten or fifteen years, not, I'm not talking about the trash thing, I'm not talking about anything that's just happened. It's always told us, we asked about the bidding, that professional services are not on that list as per where state law is.
Okay.
So that was, I mean, it's, I don't think it's anything we decided, we're not gonna bid this one particularly. Uh, because, I mean, we were told.
I respect that, and I respect that the state law said that, this is not state law, this is the law that hangs script and count. And it says purchases, and Merriam-Webster's definition, okay, alright, so, so another thing, another thing that you would bid, and I'm not trying to, you know, be smart aleck or anything. You could bid his service.
Sure.
I mean, so, you know, it opens up for.
We have the same trouble with his service, it's hard to find somebody to do it.
You don't know, 'cause you don't bid it.
I don't think you know where we did, but, anyway.
Well, show me the bids.
Chairman, for clarification, who helped me out? That's why I married somebody smarter. Um, this is getting us in line with the state law. So we're gonna bid according to the state law, including the service part and the amounts. And then we're bringing the amount down outside of state law, five thousand, to be brought before the board for bids going forward. Is that my change?
Things that are required, yes. And you can bring, any commissioner can require anything you bid. At any amount, you can, you can always require, and the board is gonna.
Just in general, I, just 'cause I don't know, do counties normally bid things that they, that they normally do themselves? Like if we have a grass cutting M A crew, do counties normally did that, just to?
No. No.
I'm just curious, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yep. To, to require bidding on everything that you do in service contracts, we just about shut the county down.
Well, sure, sure, I can get that, like the five hundred, you know, we need to bid out the coffee paper and the, and the, the pencils and pens, I get it. I was just kinda making sure the intent was to line up with the state law, and anything over five thousand, it could be brought before the board for competitive bidding or decision, that, that makes you understand?
Yeah.
So it makes your, so, so anything over five thousand dollars has to be thrown before the board for bids?
Outside of approved budget, that.
Because I think this contract is well above that. Let me understand this. We're looking at three hundred and some thousand versus five thousand.
This has, the five thousand dollars, just to be clear again, Mr. Commissioner, it provides to purchases of goods, supplies, and materials. Doesn't have anything to do with services.
Okay, 'cause the service is explicitly.
Excluded.
Not required. Bidding is not required for service, that's that last comment.
Making sure you understand that services are not a subject to the five thousand dollar requirement, that purchase.
Oh, yeah, I'm heading by right now.
Could be.
That I would, was that correct?
Anything you want, bid, you can bid.
Well, anything you don't, don't have to.
Outside, outside of state law.
Sure.
So they take away people's rights?
Any other discussion on that?
We all know how each other feels.
Alright. Any more discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Mr. Lovett?
He will.
Is he?
Oh, he's right, John.
I'll vote in favor.
I'll vote in favor.
What was his vote, though?
Thank you.
What did the number was again?
In favor, okay.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Moving on, resolution to adopt the solid waste assessment fee, twenty twenty-one.
Solid waste.
Mr. Chairman, I may, um, we, we've got a couple things here that require, um, code amendment, and also to establish the annual fee. We can, uh, continue an annual fee from year to year if you wish, but, um, the way we set up the special service district, and this was all that service delivery tragedy business that, um, that we saw when we first engaged with the city, um. The way that it was set up required that every lot, um, be set to feet, regardless of whether there was a structure located on the lot or not. You asked, the board, I say you, the board, uh, asked that we, uh, revise both solid waste and the fire district so that there could be a difference depending on whether or not there's a structure, uh, a habitable structure located on the lot or not. That's going to require, uh, two things. Number one, a code amendment to, um, specifically say that, you can change the amount of the fee depending on whether there's a building on the lot or not, and then to establish the annual fee. So, this resolution with regard to the, um. The first one that you're, you're looking at has to do with solid waste collection, is establish the fee, but then the second thing you're gonna do is take a look at the code amendment. Right behind sixty-six, sixty-two thirty-six.
Alright, I need to do one at the time, I'll see.
In, in reality, they ought to be reversed, they ought to be, as, as a code amendment first and then the resolution.
Well, don't we have the ability to do that?
Absolutely. I'm asking that you do it.
Alright. We'll change, we'll skip eleven right now, move to item twelve, which is consideration to adopt the code amendment, to amend section sixty-two thirty-six of chapter sixty-two, article two. Which, um, more or less takes the, the fee off of, trash fee off of parcels that aren't inhabited, is that right, you?
And just for clarification, I have talked to the tax commissioner, this is to get us in line with what we're actually doing already, so there's not gonna be a change in the amount of revenue that's collected, that they're collecting like this now.
But.
So, there's not gonna be a change.
But they were doing it in, uh, contrary to what.
Right.
Which is my conclusion, it was just written.
Right.
Not, not how we intended it to be written.
That's, that's correct, so I'm trying to get that straight. So, this says.
Just keep it on that.
This says specifically that the assessment will be limited only on parcels upon which there is a habitable business residence or relocatable structure.
Alright. Over motion to.
Amanda.
Second.
Mr. Lovett made the motion, Commissioner Warren second. Any discussion?
Yes. They gets to define habitable. Who defines habitable?
That's gonna be the assessment, as, as.
What is the ba, what is the basis, uh, what, I mean, what is the basis of a habitable structure?
Think you need to adopt the tax assessment.
I'm assuming they've already kinda determined that, because they're already dealing.
So, so it's my understanding that it's, if you can move into it and you've got water and electricity, it's habitable. But what about, what about sites that have structures where, I don't know, you know, we have a lot of burnt clubs around here where they bring their generator, and they can produce their own power? I mean. Once again, you're burdening homeowners, because there are vacant lots that are used for businesses, and I don't know of a business that doesn't generate trash. I'm sure there are, I'm sure there are somewhere, but the vast majority of them generate trash. So, once again, you're burdening the homeowner so other people can get a service for free.
I don't think you're burdening anybody, you're not changing the burden.
Are you paying, are you paying your fee?
Am I paying my fee?
If you, if you have a structure, if you have a structure and you're running a business off it, but it's not habitable, and it's generating trash, are you, are you paying the fee?
Paying for trash.
I have to pay the fee. I have to pay the fee, even if I don't use trash again, I have to pay the fee, 'cause I live on my property, 'cause my structure's habitable. But if you have a piece of property that has a structure on it, that, listen to me. If you have a piece of property that has a structure on it, that's not deemed habitable, that you're running a business off of it, and it's generating trash, you don't have to pay the fee.
Alright.
I'm just saying.
But nothing, this, this does not change anything we've been doing.
Right.
It just points us up.
Tax assessment.
I understand it doesn't change anything that you're doing, because what you're doing right now is you're not following the law that said every parcel has to pay.
So, we're changing the law.
Yeah, to sue the people who are not paying right now, so they, now they're justified in not paying.
No, we're, we're changing to the intent.
Okay.
I mean, but. I don't think a, a forest generates trash.
Okay, so we're going, okay, so does it say just forest land is exempt?
It doesn't exempt, no. Anyway. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, backing up to number eleven, consideration to adopt a resolution setting solid waste assessment fee for twenty twenty-one. Hubert, did you sorry again, so you're back?
Yes, I, I was, I was advising that you weren't setting a hundred dollars, and that's what the resolution does.
It already said it.
It's already, huh?
It's already said, yeah, so we just clarify what's going on.
And this, this actually, uh, we're in, we're in June, you're, you have fiscal year, once you have one through, but, uh, we're setting a calendar year, so you're gonna reconsider this again in January. As to whether you wanna change that fee or not, or re-adopt it. And we need to remember to do this every January.
Alright. Have a motion to adopt the fee.
So, Mr. Chairman, until January.
Second.
We already made the motion, Commissioner, one second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, consideration to adopt a resolution setting the fire protection fee.
We had to jump to the next one, which is the code amendment.
Alright. Let's skip thirteen to fourteen, consideration to adopt the code amendment, to amend section thirty-five, chapter thirty, which is criminal county code. Hubert, you wanna talk about that, or is it?
Well, I'm saying, I would advise that, that, um, rather than all, uh, businesses that, uh, we have the provision that says the assessment be limited against all parcels within the fire protection special service district. Provided, however, the assessment may be greater for those parcels upon which a business residence or relocatable structure is located. So, now you have the ability, uh, to set a lower fee for an uninhabited, uh, lot as opposed to a inhabited lot.
What do you mean by uninhabited?
This is basically saying where y'all set the fee for twenty-five dollars for vacant parcels, and this is basically the code amendment saying that y'all have the right to do that, and then we'll adopt the resolution setting the fee for twenty-five for vacant.
Okay, alright, I can deal with that.
You needed a split, you needed a split charge, you need language for that.
Yeah, that's right.
And then this way, if y'all in the future wanna increase, like, a business's fire fee or something like that, this gives y'all.
There. Come on with the chairman.
Motion, Commissioner Warren, to adopt the code amendment.
Thank you.
Second, Commissioner Wallace, any discussion? All in favor?
We must get good on that, then.
It's fair.
We did good.
Alright, now backing up number thirteen, consideration to adopt a resolution setting the fire protection fee for twenty twenty-one.
That's give her the right to collect, you know.
This is actually setting the amount for the fees, the twenty-five dollars for the vacant.
Again, an annual requirement.
Okay.
And this is fifty dollars for habitable structure, twenty-five dollars for uninhabited.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, Commissioner Warren, second.
Second.
Fire fee. Second, Commissioner Romeo, any discussion? I'm voting against it, 'cause I lost the last time on it, so I'm, I'm gonna stick to where I was, I meant to agree, it should have been twenty-five dollars.
That's okay.
Just, just for clarification.
Yeah.
All in favor?
It's, it's alright.
Taking losses.
Yeah.
Me too.
I understand why you're getting it, Chairman.
Just, I just didn't change in your mind.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm moving on, consideration to surplus from old vehicles at the fire department. Chief, you wanna tell us, or does it need any explanation?
No, sir, um, these vehicles are ones that we've had that's, uh, been broken, torn up and stuff, and I think actually they've been added to the list before, but they was never actually been surplus, so. Well, we wanna bring it up, and Bobby brought up that hi, his guys coming over, uh, to pick up, to buy the scrap metal, and we just wanna make sure we can add ours in there and his stuff.
Peter, how it's out?
Yeah.
The letter says here, I have someone interested in torify with the old locked up motors, who is this someone?
Uh, the person that's interested in the motors is the, the diesel guys that's just working on our fire trucks, is Donald Yatza, services. He's the one that's interested in, uh, purchasing the, the torn up motors that's in them, and also with the repair we just done, he's willing to take off the money for the motors and stuff like that for his ability of it, so. That will help offset that out, that field force.
Hubert, when we surplus something like this with our new special service district, does money go back to general funders that comes to the, it doesn't go back to the fire?
No, but, I don't believe that when you surplus equipment, doesn't have anything to do with the special service district necessarily, but I believe.
You can. I mean, I'd like to see the money go back there, because obviously it was bought, uh, through the.
You're making part of the motion?
Yep, that's right.
So, is there anything we're supposed to do to make sure that we're giving everybody the opportunity, and that we're getting the best, I mean, I know they're old, and I know they're whatever, you understand? Um, but are we not supposed to, like, put it out there on a website for people to bid on it?
We've done that in the past, from time to time.
Sheriff does auctions once a year, though.
I think Sheriff does auction, you just put some on the gov bids.
So, is there some reason why we're not doing that with these?
The only reason we're not doing that with these is because Bobby, when he came with the surplus to, to get the most bang for the buck, they're gonna give us like seven dollars a hundred on those. On scrap metal right now, and if we put them up for bid, the last time we sold fire trucks, we got five hundred dollars a piece for them, after doing the bidding process, uh, everything like that. Well, right now, with the, the lightest weighing truck out there, it'll bring a seventeen fifty with the seventeen, for, for the seven dollars a hundred on it, so that's three times what we've pro, if somebody even bid on them, or what they did in the past.
Is there a law on how to get rid of county property?
There is a statute that says that you have to, the board has to consider in surplus of gifts. Doesn't say that you have to put it up and bid to the commission.
You ain't enough to death, they go, hold on.
Look, I. I have to hold my ball.
Yeah, you're right. That's what we doing, that's why he was.
I just know people like to buy stuff and refurbish stuff, you understand? This is a fire truck, you'd be surprised, you know, what people turn stuff into, and they might be willing to, but I mean, you do whatever, y'all do whatever.
I'll be welcome to put it on Facebook, you know, on, on the, the groups and stuff like that, and see if we can get more, you know, more than.
You won't know unless you have.
More than the scrap metal will wa, pay for it, absolutely.
You won't know unless you have.
We just need the surplus.
I just need, I need permission to be able to do that, I'd be glad to do that, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we can have a motion that, go ahead and surplus that, get the most for your buck.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
We wanna know how much the bucks are.
They gonna make a motion to put it back in the fire department budget.
I, I think that way you come out, then you come out, and you put it back in the budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You went from this.
So, I've motioned surplus of equipment, put funds back in fire department budget, Commissioner Warren, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
One second. Second, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
We gonna get there.
Moving on, consideration.
We will.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration for approved adoption of vehicle use policy procedures for operation of county vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a policy, um, we had a couple commissioners that were asking us, um, this is pretty much, we've always had an unspoken rule about policy procedures. We do have a seatbelt policy, um, but Commissioner Warren, um, recommended that we get a policy together, so.
Call my name.
So, we're trying to get everything in a policy and get, I'm gonna open up, we, I'm presenting this policy to y'all, y'all can look through it, y'all can approve it today, whatever you think necessary. This is to, um, this covers the area of having, um, people who are not employees inside county vehicles, this, forget it's that.
Unless and authorized, and, and, and right now, I, I think this is a good thing, due at the fact, for many reasons, and not, and not concerned that with commissioners, that, you know, they going out of town on a business trip, and they taking supplies, whether. That don't include that, 'cause they authorized to do that. I'm talking more or less picking up the string beside the road with kids in the car, et cetera, that's a no-no.
I agree, completely.
And that had happened, and that's had happened, and we trying to fix that, but it won't happen again, the way, the taxpayers, you know, won't be on the lawsuit, and we do lose everything, whether we bid it or not, you know?
I agree, I, I hundred percent agree with y'all on that.
This also holds the employee responsible for accidents, um, we already have a policy where we check, um, NVRs on our employees every few years, but this also reiterates that as well.
And, and, and I was, I was, and kind of managing, you've done a good job of putting that together, and I appreciate that, I thought it was a good policy, and I think that we need to adopt that, to be chairman, so I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt our policy going forward. Where we gonna have this problem in the future.
Hey, just a.
I have a motion, Commissioner Warren, to adopt. Policy is presented.
Second.
Second.
Mike has a question.
But nowhere's going now, we discussing.
Right, right, yeah, I, I, I remember last time, so, so, I, does, is anything in there pertaining to cell phones?
Like what?
Um, that's a state law, and they're not exempt, the only people that are exempt from that state law, Sheriff, probably not, is public safety, but it has to be pertaining to the job at the time, it can't be you just, just 'cause you're a cop.
I understand the state law, but I think we need to put it in this to let them know we're going to enforce it too, 'cause some of our citizens, I mean, I saw a little guy texting, and he was going down the road, he was about to run me off the road. Well, it's in our policy, and, and, and it just gives us more for what we offer.
We can, I'm with you on that.
I mean, that's good to know that, but, you know, you've got that good eye to see what somebody doing in another part of the country.
If you pass the car, you can, you can go, they doing that.
I don't wanna assume anything, we gonna make sure we got the fact. I don't mind putting it in there, but let's don't, let's don't zero, let's don't zero a guy saying he was texting, but you can't prove that.
Yes, you can.
The police do, don't they?
Yeah. You get the wreck.
That's if the wreck happened, they can go to the wreck list and see if you was texting that.
Commissioner Warren, you can't, they can't prove you getting a wreck.
But, but what I'm saying, we not talking about a wreck now, we talking about going down the road. I don't mind adding no sheriff.
We're just talking about a, those cell phone issues.
We're just talking about a, those cell phone issues. Yes. Everyone has their, but this is really bad day.
Does all that inclusive to off-road vehicles?
Oh, yeah, my blood pressure's high.
All that included on the off-road vehicles, stretchers, something.
I, I assume that you're accepting hands free operation, you got Bluetooth.
Well, you got Bluetooth, you ain't got your hand on it, you know, that's different.
State law.
That's different, Bluetooth's different, I got Bluetooth, so I don't want you to.
Need me for that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I thought you said it was a damn.
No.
But I agree with the, Commissioner Dixon, I, I see it all the time.
Yeah, it's easy to say, it really is, I, I.
If you're setting up, yes, but, you know, you meet in a car, a truck, yeah, you, you're not a big truck, you're right.
Truck, yeah.
Yeah, right, see, in a truck, you can look down and see, but in a car, it's kinda hard to see.
Well, most of the time.
But that's a good model, that's, that's not texting there, though.
Well, I mean, you.
But you can't do that, that's wrong, you can't do that.
Yeah, still things are law.
Hands free.
That's state law already.
I know, but it's, I just, I think this is valuable, our boys know that we recognize it's state law.
Evan, you still there, right, Commissioner? Alright, Commissioner, but.
We need to.
I, I want you, Laurie, if you will, on this policy, to get any employee to sign off on it.
We will.
Well, right now, I, I don't, I don't want to come back six months down the road, and we, we, we've marched into the deal, and they say I didn't know anything about it.
That's right, that's right, they gonna do it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, yes.
Yes.
So, what are, what are consequences when they don't follow this real end deal?
Sure don't.
That'd be a kind of managing, folks, you got in there about.
You hear this thing's got a lot of lawyer in it.
Yeah, you got a lot of lawyers, she got in there about possible warning, a warning, the determination it could lead to that, calling with circumstance.
It's, um, really consistent with a number of other things where, uh, you have a, um, the ability to determine the punishment depending on the culpability. And maybe first time, you, you give a warning, second time, you submit it, I mean, you know, I, I think, uh, we all trust her acting.
Well, when we gotta write, when we, when we gotta putting all these things into place, you just set yourself up where you have to do something, and a lot of this stuff's just judgment, and it comes back to where whoever, department head should make the judgment, I don't know that we have to have a policy. I'm not in favor of four pages, how to drive a vehicle, but, um.
I, I really have it in play with the chairman, at least something we can work on, and we end up in court, we have something in right, that what we said we did, it didn't.
As I said, it's got a lot of lawyer in it.
I know, but.
I didn't write it.
It's unfortunate that we have to do this, but, but people just don't.
Yeah.
Think, or they, they just have to lay it out.
And, and, I got, I, I don't see maybe terminating them at the spot, but, you know, maybe a warning, uh, to talk to them, a possibility, even send home a couple days, but I, hey, if the next time they could be terminated, because it's so hard to find good workers here now, it's kinda hard to get people to work.
Do we not have a set policy on, on reprimanding?
Uh.
Like, we don't have a procedure that says step one, you know, one, first offense, second offense?
I, I just, I just wanna have something. What say? First.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ready? Yeah, just to remind you, the, the state of Georgia is a right to work state, does not require that, um, you can, you can fire, dismiss a, an employee for any reason, or no reason.
Yeah, at will.
At will.
At will.
Yeah, that, uh, but that's not what I was talking about, I mean, for consistent, for consistency between one employee and the next, do you have a policy on how to address, you know, infractions, I mean, like.
Determination.
One, two, well, first it would be like a, uh, in a roll, and then a written, and then a, a suspension.
Make the same home?
Yeah.
We have.
I mean, I've read the policy.
We have a first up policy that badly needs to be updated.
Maybe we should work on that.
I think that's.
I've only been talking about it for twenty years.
Now it's time to do something.
We are, and see, hopefully, like, once we get that updated, all of this, these little policies that y'all are adopting, it'll all be in them.
We'll do it.
It'll all be inclusive into that new updated policy.
Mr., Mr. County Attorney, would you get, start working on that update policy, uh, your name did mention in the process of bidding just now, so, would you mind looking into that, getting that done?
Uh, again, yes, I, I, uh, have presented a potential updated policy about ten, fifteen years ago, um, I'll do it again.
Thank you, sir.
I know, since I've been here, you presented one, Mr. Attorney, and that's been about six and a half years, seven years, so I know it should be on file, because I know he did personally.
So let's go move forward, then, this get, get done.
Any more discussion on our, uh, vehicle use policy? There's a lot of common sense in here, but I'm concerned about the overreaching of some of it.
It's not common anymore. I was just saying, it's not.
I'll still say there's something in there, that's trying to legislate common sense, and I'm pretty much opposed to that, but, any more discussion? All in favor? Opposed? I'm opposed to it.
Evan, are you opposed or favor?
I'm a favorer.
Okay, he's a little late on hand, right?
Yeah, you gotta, gotta get the hand a little faster, Commissioner. Okay.
It is, that was a delay.
Motion carries, thank you.
See, Mr., Miss Commissioner, see me and that chairman, that we disagree on.
All the time.
That's it, no, we're just agreeing, we just got to remember.
What about I said, not that?
I know, I didn't either, I just say, Miss Commissioner, we got two here.
Alright, Jesse, we can move on.
Yes, sir.
We used to.
Consideration to food proposal of Al Green to operate a loader at county transfer station, um, John, you wanna take this?
I'm just gonna relay some numbers, I suppose, um, and I'll try to run through these as clearly as possible. The net cost is our actual expense minus our revenue taken in, and these are for the total department, so, in some years, they're divided to half in the budget, between collection and disposal, now it's just one budget line item after we did a service delivery strategy change in special service district. So seventeen eighteen net cost to operate was one million thirty-six thousand, eighteen nineteen budget, the net cost to operate was nine hundred and ninety-one thousand. Again, in nineteen twenty budget, we can begin doing insights and making changes, the net cost of operation was eight hundred and forty-five thousand, and through today, which I know we got a few days left, the net cost of our twenty twenty-one is six hundred and thirty-six thousand. So we've had, if you verse seventeen eighteen, that's four hundred thousand in savings off of our budget. Um, by consolidating the sites and using the grapple to pick up bulk waste and things like that, a large portion of it is the buildings being done a lot more efficiently here in our office, um, Sonya's done a fantastic job with that, and Lori kinda took that over. By the time we're talking about some of this personnel policy stuff, she kinda dumped that in her lap, so she did take over some of that, so a lot of that revenue has offset, um, the total cost. I would like to make mention, just to confuse things, in eighteen and nineteen, we passed up on about a half a million dollars worth of purchases for front and load Broadhurst for two of them. We also passed up on purchasing thirty additional cans, at that time, it would've been seventy-five grand, and right now, I recommend that we pass up buying a two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar loader. And allow Al Green slash Atlantic Waste to load it, in theory, for free, and their proposal is to load, transport, and dispose of our waste always, excluding C and D at forty-nine dollars a ton. They will at their discretion divide out C and D and take it to Jenkins County at forty-three dollars a ton. Given the fact that our current hauling is high, and the current cost, I calculated, if you run an average of nineteen tons, which may be, like you said, Allison, a little bit heavier than some, it comes out to fifty-three fifty per ton. Plus the cost of loading, so manning the loader, maintaining the loader, and buying a loader at this point in the game. So there's some substantial savings there by allowing him to load it cheaper than what he's hauling it for, um, obviously, the benefit for their company is he can get heavier, quicker, faster loads, better turnarounds. And he wants to take the roughly four hundred tons a month worth of solid waste from Jenkins County, and load it and send it to Superior the same day. That would generate at our current rate around thirteen, I mean, around ten thousand dollars, and the C and D would generate an additional thirteen thousand dollars, so, I mean, if you take into consideration the rate savings, the C and D, the Jenkins, I mean, there's, there's some large, easily to figure savings upon doing this. Um, for clarity, um, I spoke with Lori, and I think Mr. Lovett had asked for things to coincide altogether, um, I agree with that, so the collection, the hauling, and the loading out, we choose to not let it coincide together through that twenty twenty-four. So we have a very good idea of what we wanna do when the time comes to bid, instead of just working the tons, the rates, and things like that. But for the time being, to save roughly around four and a half dollars a ton, six thousand up on ours, plus everyone else's in C and D and things like that, and not buy a two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar loader, it seems like a pretty easy decision mathematically. And I know there's some personal issues that, that are gonna arise, and that, you know, we can discuss those, but that's what I had, Chairman, and I think that's what Sam's offering us now. Unless I missed anything, Sam, I'm trying to just be clear about it.
So what's on the table right now?
What, what you putting on the table?
Guess I'm putting it on the table that we accept his offer of loading, hauling, and disposing of our waste at forty-nine dollars a ton.
And.
And buying a loader, and he's gonna divide out C and D and take it out at forty-three dollars a ton. Our current rate is fifty-one dollars a ton, we can change our rate at any time, obviously, if we go to sixty, he's not gonna bring any other trash, or city trash and things like that, because it's just, it's still unethical.
And, uh, he gonna provide a man there to do that?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good point, he's gonna provide a person there, full-time, to man the loader, and the cleanliness of the transfer station area, one of the biggest problems we have is that it comes everywhere quickly, just to our inefficiencies.
And only thing we'll be responsible for, to continue, maintain around eighteen sites like we doing already, right?
Operate the scale.
Yeah, operate, we're gonna operate the scales and the building, and we'll be responsible for.
All it changes is the load, like the.
Really just.
Trans rotation, it, it puts him where he, he brings the loader and operator.
Yeah.
More or less.
But it does, you know, things bring the hauling down significantly.
He better put more on the truck.
Yeah, if you just, I mean, I don't know how you wanna divide it, if you take forty-nine dollars, and right now, our current fee through their rate is twenty-four fifty, it was twenty-eight years ago at Broadhurst. Usually though at Broadhurst, it was twenty-eight fifty, um, currently, if you take twenty-four fifty, you could say the hauling's sixteen fifty, and the loading's eight, it come out forty-nine, however you wanna do the math, I suppose you could cheat it any way you want.
And you recommend this until twenty twenty-four?
I mean, if you take nineteen tons divided by fifty, this costs almost twenty-eight dollars a ton to haul it, and if you take forty-nine and do your math, and you're talking sixteen fifty to haul it, and he's gonna load it for eight, that's pretty cheap to load it, really, I mean, that's why I buried the cover of the input on the machine.
No, no. It's twenty-eight, right now, it's twenty-eight to load it and haul it, and what he's doing.
That does not count the loading.
He got loaded.
He got loaded right now, we're paying that separately out of our sanitation budget to load it.
We don't have to do that anymore.
Okay.
Um, I guess that'd be more personnel related, I'm not really sure.
So we cut that employee's job, because if we're not, then we're just moving it.
And we're not paying that employee's job, so.
Okay, so we're not, so we're not saving that money, we're just moving it somewhere else.
I'm not.
Technically, right now, an inmate is loading, and it's being overseen by a guard.
That's why.
I mean, I know you're saving the money, because you're, you're taking that from one department to the other.
You wouldn't have to have that certified officer, that patency there to watch that. We would have to pay any.
Um, oh, is this, we had a motion to come, right?
We haven't had a motion yet.
If there is needed, I'll. Now, the, the, the only thing is, I'm assuming that Sam Solomon would warn us through our contact would be to line all this stuff through the same timeframe as our collection contract.
Yeah, that's my question, what, guess what you wanna do, um, to two, twenty twenty-four?
Me, I don't know, now, I guess I suck the board, but.
I mean, you, I mean, the reason, the reason why I said you, is because you and Commissioner Lovett been working with this thing.
Motion.
Sure, so, ask Mr. Lovett his opinion on it.
Mr. Lovett, could you give me your opinion on that, please, sir?
What's the question, do you say?
Uh, the question was, you know, uh, what, uh, Commissioner Dixon, just, just explain, you know, uh, what your opinion of that, going forward with, uh, Sam Solomon letting this be through twenty twenty-four?
Think about it.
I say.
Through twenty twenty-four, I would like to see the various contracts synchronized, so that everything is at the same time, so at that point, you're gonna bid it out as a complete package.
Can't be.
You know exactly what we want done, below the time from the board, uh, also, you know, with the loader, we have an immediate situation at the landfill, uh, at the, our transportation, and that we, we need a loader right now. Uh, we can reduce our disposal costs somewhat, because we can separate the C and D from the residual solid waste stream, and, uh, take that out, and, uh, Jenkins County out of that's the cost. Uh, and also, we have this existing contract with all tele, you know, and, uh, not jumping in, good faith, good faith with that contract, and to, and to, he had to seek to break that contract, uh, you open the county up to potential litigation. So, uh, I just think it's a good idea to just go ahead and, um, uh, consolidate this, this whole waste stream from end to end, um, at the rates conventions, and, uh, if we want to bid out this thing at the end of that turn, um, be free to do so.
So you're saying yes to through twenty twenty-four, am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sue.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I'm interested in the loading, like I mentioned, Sam taking over the loading and the running of the transfer station, the rest of it, when it coincides, uh, it doesn't matter, I mean, like, whatever we get, it's fine, it's probably better if it all did, but I don't, I don't get stuck on that, but where we are, it's, it cost us a lot of money to run the transfer station, he can do that more efficiently than we can.
Commissioner, Commissioner Dixon.
Costs us a lot of money in the work, wait.
We're gonna have to buy a loader, or prepare a loader, or get a loader.
Be careful.
Well, and when repaired, it's still, I mean, fifteen thousand dollars on it.
Because it still costs you to curdle load it, because you're not, you're missing five.
I just think it's, my opinion, I think he can do a better job running the transfer station than we can, more efficiently.
My opinion, I don't know.
I got a question, why are we arguing about why it takes so long to load these trucks, like, like, it takes three hours to get to Savannah, get up that mountain of garbage, dump, and get back down, and get back to Savannah? I mean, if we got a problem with somebody operating a, a piece of equipment to pick up some trash and dump it over into a trailer, and it's taking them longer than three hours, that has nothing to do, that has to do with, with the management, with, with the management of that person.
I'm not.
Oh, 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 my god, it, alright, hold on.
Don't start, now, I'm not sure that the trash is there where you could put it in in thirty minutes, I don't think you have twenty-five tons of trash sitting on go all the time.
Okay, so that's.
Put in there, so.
That comes from the collection then, so that, that's a collection of the trash and getting it to the transfer station.
Not, I mean, I think it's just the nature of it, I don't know that it's anything.
So it's not, it's not there following the transfer station?
Yeah, but you are.
That's not what I said at all about that, she talking about the three hours to get a turnaround.
You're, there are.
People to load it.
What now? I didn't, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Qualified people to load it, I think, and stuff like that.
Well, I think that's your question, I think we got the wrong bucket.
Yeah.
And I think if you got a bigger, stronger load, and a bigger bucket, that has more.
And a longer reach.
Like a deal on, where you can pack it more, I think you can put more tons for sure.
Still stand by my opinion, and I think he can do it better than we can.
Probably has.
And cheaper.
Well, if we get a qualified person to own that machine, rather than an inmate, now that inmate's sore, then yes, you know, we need operator, not inmate, but if I, if I may.
Well, there again.
If I may pass this round, because mine comes next, and just kind of.
We're gonna walk it all together, if that's what you're gonna do.
Might as well, because if y'all pass this, then this, is there a left, and a right?
I know where you're going.
All I'm saying is.
This is constantly.
I was like, because I knew it was gonna happen. We're constantly arguing.
We're constantly arguing.
But if you got.
About efficiency.
Everybody got one?
Yes, sir.
And, and my thing is, when the time the trailer leaves that loading dock and gets back to that loading dock, there should be at least two or three other trailers loaded. Okay? I mean, it shouldn't take that, it doesn't take that long to, to, to scoop a loader and put it over in the, in the can. It just doesn't. So what I'm saying is, is y'all are talking about time and money. Um, that's a management thing. Like you, like, like Dixon said, uh, Commissioner Dixon said, you need an operator. Um, I just don't.
I don't think we holding up trash. I think there's some downtime in that.
So there's gonna be downtime with him too?
It's not like it's a.
And it's on his, on his bill. I mean, it's on his dime, so.
His watch.
We have an inmate.
All right, if you will, this PM agreement with Nancy, I talked with him a few times and he, he sent me this late yesterday afternoon, so I didn't get what they could get to y'all in time. But this dealership responsibility, this is on the left side and what we're required to do. And if you'll see this, uh, this is two years. It starts at fifteen hundred hours and it's a eighteen hundred dollar trip. And if you'll see the quantity, the, the stuff he does, the air filters, the fluids, he sends off oil samples to see if there's anything in the oil, to make sure there's no metal. Uh, it, it's, um, it's, and, and this is done every five hundred hours. So by spending seven thousand dollars in two years, which that pricey of a piece of equipment, you have to maintain it. You have to get it on a, a good PM schedule. Now, our guy's watching this guy for a year or two and we'll be able to send off our own soil sample, but first we need to train him, let him watch what he does. Now, we're still responsible for, uh, you know, the standards, reaching, defending, you know, just the whole day-to-day activities, but as far as a, a, a good PM servicing, and that, that extends the warranties too. So you get, you get, uh, uh, other things involved. I didn't, I didn't go into real depth with him. I just wanted y'all to be aware of what's out there, what we can do.
And but just.
What we can do to better our, our loading process out there. You know, we need to give our guys good equipment, uh, equipment needed and good running to get a job done or service done for our community. So, that's it.
So this is a seventy two hundred dollar, for a two-year agreement?
Yeah, eighteen hundred dollars a trip.
For four trips? And always doing chicken oil and greasing it?
I'm gonna just read the left side. That's.
Yeah, but it's my, my thing on that is fifteen hours, thousand hour machine, when it comes up in his oil sanitation, you got metal in oil, you got transmission going bad, that don't cause any of that.
There's a problem. He can detect problems before.
I understand how it works.
And this, this is just an idea now. It, it depends on where it goes. He was wanting to come today to talk to everybody. I said, no, sir, let me just put this out there, let him think about it and.
You ever get any people call you on your cell phone wanting to cruise your car wanting? It's the same kind of thing.
Yeah, about five times a day. But now this same guy, now, now, give this, this same guy came out to our shop. If he not, and helped our guys and showed our guys how to break it down. So it's not like it's just a sales, but he came and helped us break down just differential and told us what was wrong with it. Plus, there was another problem with the brakes. So, yes, he may be a salesman, but I think he's, he's in the business to he, to help us too. So, you know, I, I commend everybody for trying to make money, but.
I'm saying the PM deal, if you start on a new piece of equipment, I just, I might add to it, but.
But it doesn't matter. I mean, it's still, it's still, it's still good. It's still running. It might, with the proper PMs at this point in time going forward, if you start maintaining things, you may get five more years of service out. Up to where it's now, it may, it may shoot the engine in two years. So you get three more years of service for seven, for whatever, a thousand, I think, eleven. That, that's just something to think about and look it over. I certainly don't hate. I just wanted y'all to have that information.
Thank you.
Yep. No problem.
I, I agree with Commissioner Dixon, but you know, the argument, the basis of the argument to allow all green access to the transfer station is a broken equipment in an unloaded truck. Um, and my concern with that is, is that that, that's on us. It's on us to make sure that this equipment is maintained properly. It's on us to make sure that we are hiring competent operators and, or indoor training our people that we are hiring to, to perform their jobs efficiently. Um, even, even an inmate, you know, there are inmates that is properly trained, they will do the job. I mean, you know, there, there are inmates. So, so if we got one that doesn't wanna work, doesn't wanna do what he wants to do, then send him back to the prison and bring somebody else over, you know? Um, and, and so, I mean, I just think it's, it's a very.
I, I understand Commissioner Willis, some of what you, Commissioner Dixon's saying. But now, since surrounding county, everybody getting out of the trash business. I know you wanna go back to doing that for sale, but I considered that one time. But, you know, after talking with different folks in surrounding county, I mean, it, it, it's almost like we just, you know, going up a clay hill, we're just spinning out of the hill. We got a piece of equipment out here now. It's not just thirteen thousand dollars that broke now. That piece of equipment is constantly giving us a problem. Not just now, it's gonna be something else. And you were saying about, you know, trying to fix it right. We've been doing this for now, almost, you know, with these, out there operating twenty years. So why none of this stuff being corrected then? Only thing we trying to do is save the taxpayers money. And you just heard the fit and they be red eyed. We can't beat the situation we got. And much as I want to get back in doing it out of sample, we gotta go out and hire qualified people to do it. You say, well, let's pay them a good salary. That's true. But we gotta find somebody that's capable of doing the job. And right now, you giving a little less headaches on Bobby and everybody else out there. Because I'm telling you, say, you, 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 you been dealing with this, in just now, I talked with Bobby about this and Bobby, he not here today, do I have to fight? He got bit by a house snake. And, 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 and he, he would have been here. And I talked with Bobby about this situation over and over. He said, J C, I'm gonna tell you right now. He said, with us trying to do this, it's almost like we running a little small grocery store competing with Walmart. It's hard to do. And it, it, we got good intention and I know you wanted this, everything, want to give everybody the opportunity, but sometimes it just don't, it just don't work that way. And for the, the fool making decision-making, sometime we gotta take a stand and say, hey, this is what we think is best for Striven County. If they don't like your decision that you made or I made, then where, where do you change it at? They can't change it by coming here talking. You have to change it at the pole. And I'm just telling you right now and telling you, Commissioner Willis, I'm, I'm, I, I'm willing to do what I think is best for Striven County. I have told my constituents many times. If you don't like what I'm doing, then you do what you need to do. Because right now, I'm bald headed already. I can't get any worse. And so I, I, I'm just telling you now, I, 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 I agree with Commissioner Love it on what he say about giving this, combining this together. And then in twenty twenty four, we give an opportunity to everybody to bid. And it'll be happens and happens. We can't fix it again. If these guys get the best project and we choose to do that with full commission, then that's what we do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, I think that the loader is just a really good seller point, obviously, where we have a loader. I agree with Dixon. That's just a good seller point. Boy, if you take into consideration that four fifty ton rate decrease, that's eighty fifty thousand dollars. If you take into consideration tipping and the C and D, I mean, pushing seventy five thousand, not including any cost of maintaining the loader. I mean, you're a hundred thousand dollars safer here. Easy. Wouldn't have headache risk liability. There's some type of risk liability associated with all this stuff.
Mr. Love it, Mr. Love it's got a question.
You got, you got your raise up there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just, just one point. Uh, it's my understanding that the loader that we have is not really adequate as a job. I understand that, I was told that it doesn't reach into the trailer when it, when it loads down. So even if we're repairing that loader, it's still not up to the job because it's just not adequately, uh, equipped to do the job.
Arm reach.
How, how, how long have we had this for?
It's just a problem.
And it's, and we just now learning this that it's not adequate to do the job?
Yeah, that's why we've been loading trucks.
On, on.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's what this technically, I think, that all we respect, it took a company coming in to show what they were doing wrong.
Well, what are we gonna say? We did it for twenty years or something, just doing it ourselves. We, we managed.
That's right.
So I got a question. So, um.
It also is costing us a million dollars at this point in time.
I just like, um, bringing in Jenkins County's trash. So you said there's four hundred tons a month?
That's what, um, Sam Sullivan told me.
Okay, so that's forty eight hundred tons a year, which is what he said. Okay, so we're gonna, um, Atlantic, Atlantic Way, Billwall is gonna pay us fifty one dollars a ton, right? For Jenkins County's trash. Okay? And then we're gonna pay forty nine dollars a ton for the trash going out, right? For that same trash going out. So I got forty eight hundred at fifty one dollars. It's two hundred and forty four thousand eight hundred dollars coming in. That's money coming in. And then we got forty nine dollars a ton going out. That's two hundred and thirty five thousand two hundred dollars going out. So that's nine thousand six hundred dollars is what you said?
Nine to six hundred?
A year.
Yes.
So for ten thousand dollars, that's less than a thousand dollars a month. We're gonna bring in another county's trash.
I think, I think in order to get this reduced rate of four fifty a ton, which equates to fifty thousand, part of that is we need to allow them to go in Jenkins County, saw the waste to transfer out and we bring our C and D there to be buried.
No. So, so that, that is one way. You're correct. The other way is to bid out your hauling because your hauling is too high. And then bid your tipping at your landfills to see if you can get a better rate on your tipping and then you don't have to bring it in this county's trash.
Inadvertently, but bidding on.
Yes or no? I'm sorry, it does a question. I'm sorry. Is that correct?
I didn't know that was a yes or no.
I'm sorry, is that correct?
I did not.
Okay, one way, one way is the way you're doing it. Another way to reduce the hauling and the tipping is to bid out the hauling because it's high. And to bid out the tipping because we do, we should bid it anyways. It's never been bid. So we don't even know what we could do there. Um, that would save money. Yes or no?
I don't know what the bid could be.
And another thing, what, what, you know.
And, you know, you look at Stacy, well, they just bid out their hauling. And it's equivalent of what we're paying and they're going sixty thousand tons. And if you do, however you wanna do the math, it's probably cheaper for miles we gotta look for them to take it. So I mean, that's your question. It could be cheaper, it could not be. There's a lot. The problem we're having is if somebody's hauling and somebody different's loading, somebody different's bringing it to the loader.
That's a problem.
That's the problem. That's what I mean, Mr. Everyone agreed that the holder's gonna be mad if he's sitting there eight hours a day getting one load because a loader's tore up, came back messed up, inmate didn't show up. Something happened.
Well, I, I talked about it a few times, but he said, he's talking to those drivers out there and he says, our transfer, our loading department loads better than Stacy's first and quicker. That's what, that's what the truck driver was telling us in. I don't know.
I've been out there and I've watched them.
Well, I'm just going by Bobby's words.
And I, I went out there last week, week before. What was that saying? But I went out there and I sat there and I watched them load two trucks. And the turnaround time was about, I think about forty minutes. But that truck was sitting there waiting an hour before it started to get loaded. But before they started actually putting trash in it.
Why?
That's the question. That's what I'm asking Bobby. Like, that's the question. Why?
If you let somebody else do it, it doesn't matter why he sits.
Why are you sitting there? Where's the inmate?
It's on his dime.
Like, why isn't it being loaded? Like, it don't take them like thirty, forty minutes. Correct. It's not that.
We're sitting. So I make.
It's the. My next question is, this transfer station belongs to the county. What compensation is the county gonna receive for use of our transfer station? Outside of, you know, this, this whole savings deal, but, because we got to bring in Jenkins County's trash, that benefits them. Where's our compensation? Like, where's their compensation for allowing an outside party to come in and take over their transfer station? Because it don't belong to me and it don't belong, anybody sitting around this table, it belongs to people. Like, they bought and paid for it. So where's their, like, are we gonna get a check? Are you gonna write us a check for, I don't know, like, ten thousand dollars a month rent or use or something like that? I mean, are we gonna?
So you're wanting to let him run the whole transfer station?
No, just, just, just the loading dock. You just wanna give him the loading dock for free?
I thought you said transfer station.
I'm sorry, the loading dock. You, so where's the compensation for the loading dock? Because I wanna make sure that, that, you know, if y'all move forward with giving somebody else, just handing over county property to somebody, that the damages are gonna be covered. The wear and tear is gonna be covered. That, you know what I'm saying? That we are protecting the people's assets. So what's the insurance policy? What's the contract? What's the liability? I mean, I wanna know, like, are we gonna receive any money? Because you can't just roll across our scales left and right and bring in additional trash. I mean, he says it's just from Jenkins County. We don't know that. Do you know that? Are you gonna get out there? I'm not gonna get out there with the trash. You gonna get out there with that trash? I don't know, looking at that trash. So it might come from matter. It might come from Stacy's first.
If we're making two dollars a ton tomorrow, they bring, I'm fine with it. As far as wear and tear on the scales, I don't know that.
I think the ten thousand.
They'll pay a hundred dollars a ton?
In the contract, it says they'll pay whatever it is.
I don't think it getting much tonnage.
Might not get much tons. But you're control of the price and the profit.
But they have took out a copy to Stacy's first, the transfer thing.
Commissioner, everything that comes across that script is, is, is bills.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's some revenue strings there right there.
Well, heck.
Small.
It's middle, it's middle restoration. So it's like Jenkins County alone is like ninety six thousand dollars a year. Is that gonna make up for the wear and tear on the scales and, and I just.
They don't weigh out that bad. Not really.
Well, and I just, I just feel like the people should be compensated for their transfer station, like.
They are. We're getting a four dollar and fifty cent reduction in our rate.
We could get that anyway if you bid it.
And loading for free.
We could possibly get that anyway if you bid it.
And dividing the C and D.
And dividing the C and D.
Yeah, which we have to pay for to get rid of. Which, which we have to pay for now. You're right. That's right.
That's fair enough.
Right. We're paying fifty three fifty right now for the C and D.
That'll be forty three.
Be forty three. It's like, a few hundred cents on that.
Why the fifty three fifty?
Nineteen tons at five fifty a load. Our average weight is nineteen tons. Comes out to twenty eight ninety four per ton hauling.
That's just where the number is today. We hope that number get lower.
Yes, okay.
Is there a motion?
I, I want you. We, we've been in discussion. Well, why?
No, we just come close and.
Now, I mean, this, to me, is pretty cut and dry. I mean, he's gonna say.
So, so is this gonna be two motions, one for, I don't know, one for Sullivan to, uh, load his truck, load the trucks? And then the other one to accept Jenkins County's trash?
Yeah. And then another one for combining all these contracts into one. So y'all fixing to just completely dismiss the fact that the hauling contract comes up in December? Like, you fixing to give him, are you fixing to back up and give him a, roll it all in as of today? Are you, is that what y'all fixing to do?
As I told you, I'm interested in him operating the transfer station part. Rest of it, I'm, six one half does another. I don't care. I feel like he can do a better job. He can make this deal much more efficient. He puts his loader, the transfer station, in his man. Takes headache off of us, takes money off of us.
It, it, it is.
Just a good deal.
It, it's a headache.
For us.
It's a headache out there. I mean.
And the rest of it, wherever y'all wanna go.
But, Mr. Chairman, we, we.
I mean, we could have voted to allow him to operate the loader and the loader to talk at this transfer station with an approved amendment to the contract by the county attorney.
But Hubert, I'll look for your advice on how many motions or what we need.
We can make it our own if you want to.
Or, I mean, if you're not want, if you're not wanting to do the up, the, the updated agreement. Right now, what's on the agenda is to approve the proposal with all green services to operate the loader at the county transfer station.
Yeah.
So you could.
Before, whatever.
You could just do, you could just approve the proposal for him to do that now and then, lucky, you can make a motion after that to do the agreement or do the agreement at another meeting, whatever. But right now, what's on the agenda is the proposal for him to operate the loader at the transfer station.
I re, I would like to request that this board do it separately. So everybody is clear on what you're voting on. Yes. So the proposal is easier to call out.
You got one thing on the agenda?
Let's, let's do the one thing on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a proposal that we, um, I'm seeing emotions, that we accept the proposal, um, for all green service to operate the loader at the county trans, transfer station.
Second, Mr. Chairman. Second, Mr. Chairman. To provide, and, and operate.
To provide and operate, excuse me.
Have a motion, Commissioner Romeo, second, Commissioner Warren. Any discussion on that aspect of it?
They don't beat it to death.
I'm standing up to them.
Why you like you?
I think, I think we could do it better ourselves, you know.
Well, now we're just trying to give with the loader, because the loader's down, we're just trying to get the trash moved. And then we'll go back to everything else at, at a later date.
opposed. Motion carried, thank you. All right. We need to address any others today, or we do it.
Do we need to get an amendment from Sam to review for the next meeting?
Yes.
Wait, and put, uh, put that on the agenda, it's not on the agenda for this meeting, put it on the agenda for later.
Amendment on what?
Whatever y'all want it to be.
An amendment on what? What are you amending? So we're gonna amend the existing contract that expires in December?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking what we're gonna do.
You just, you just said that we need to get an amendment. Yeah, so you, an amendment on what? On, on the hauling contract?
Do we need to get an amendment on the hauling contract?
I can't question that we need to lump it together, where it all expires at one time, or we're gonna bid the rest of it out separately, the hauling.
Well, I gotta, I have, I have a suggestion. If you wanna lump it all together, why don't you let it run until December and then lump it all together in December? And start it all over in December.
Because their contract expired, they, they, in twenty twenty four, that's what they're trying to get it all together.
And this one doesn't expire until December.
Right.
So why not let it run? I mean, if you can amend one, why can't you amend the other one?
Probably could, if that's what the board wanted to do.
But then, if you amend the other one, it puts us in a lawsuit.
No, no, we amended.
Mr. Attorney, the one that we signed in twenty twenty four? Yeah.
If, if both parties want it to amend it, you can always amend the contract if everybody's.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, exactly.
So what is this, this, so both parties have to amend the hauling contract, so?
Yes.
Uh, that's right, I forgot.
If we don't agree with the amendment, then, yeah, we, we're gonna get sued. If we don't agree going in, we're gonna get sued. Com- Commissioner Lovey, your, your, your idea was to, you wanna see all this uh combined together? And put out one bid for everything, I'm a correct?
Yeah, I, I'd like to see the calendar dates synchronized, so that, you know, even if, even if you don't get it all out at the same, like, those contracts end at, you know, see, they're at the same. We have one contract, contract that's a calendar year, and one contract that's a fiscal year, so.
Yes, that's correct, no.
We, we don't have it on the agenda, we, we gonna, we gonna put it on the next agenda, okay? Okay, next agenda.
There's nothing more?
Okay, so the, we'll, just for clarification. Are you still gonna do agenda number eighteen, or did Mike?
No, they must, probably.
Mike, Mike say, it, it don't do no good. I just want your daughter to be aware of what could happen.
And thank you, I appreciate you looking into that. Although I don't agree with it, I do appreciate you looking into it.
That's the whole purpose of having seven people, all informed and no opinions.
All opinions and no information, I think there's more. But anyway, all right, moving on to road closure.
Tom's got it, Miss got it, Attorney.
Yes, you wanna, Ms. Thompson came last meeting when you were.
Yeah.
When you were busy, like, so I don't know what our process is, if you'll.
You, we need to determine whether or not you wanna go forward with the process. If you do, then we need, at the very least, an accurate drawing, or better yet. A plan of what it is that you wanna close, who the landowners are on that closure. The closure that process, then you'll vote to actually close it at the next meeting. Um, and put it in the newspaper, uh, for two weeks, have a public hearing, following that. And if, uh, assume, uh, assume at the August meeting, and uh, if you have the votes to close it, if you decide to do it, it wouldn't happen before.
All right.
All right.
Ms. Thompson, you wanna, address that in here? I mean, you talked about last time, uh.
That is what he suggested that we have to do to get this road closed?
Yeah, I think that's the law.
That's, that's Scriven County's law? Okay, even if the person owns the property on each side, and nobody else has access to it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, what if it's damaging my property?
Now, then that's maybe a lawsuit that you have, for those who are damaging your property. But right now, if I understand, if the road at issue is a county road, it's on the county road uh system. And in order for the county to abandon that, or to uh cease to maintain it. Um, you've got to go through this process to do it, that's the law. I think it's also um interesting to contemplate that. People are under the mistaken assumption that if the county goes forward and abandons the county road. That it automatically then revert to the surrounding landowners, that's not true. It's owned by the county, the county can put it out for bids.
What was that, the road?
It might be um.
And if, I don't have to give you a deed to my land for you to be doing that, I, I don't understand.
Well, the first, the first order of business, that's, that's just to consider, first order of business, decide whether or not you wanna go through this process, uh, considering closing.
We did that last month.
Well, you, you got to, you got to vote on it. Today, you didn't have a motion, and you didn't vote on it. Is, is that what you wanna do, then we've got to bring something back to you with a plan or a, a sketch. That's got to be a, uh, voter, and then it's got to be put in the papers, got to be public hearing held.
Well, then let's, 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 let's make a motion, let's do a motion, I make a motion to, to.
Go forward with the process.
Nobody else owns no property up there.
But, but she can't get, we can't do anything, we cannot resolve this issue until we move forward.
The, the motion has got to be, that board has determined. That this county road has ceased to be used by the public to the extent that no substantial public purpose is served by it. And that its removal from the county road system is otherwise in the best public interest of the county. And you do that by certification on record, so you're certified that you have decided that it is of no public use to, to the county. To continue to have this road on the county roads, that it is uh for no substantial public purpose.
And if we have someone come out and, and guess that they don't want that road closed, then you hear that stuff.
No, sir, I own the property all the way. If, the, this road that you're talking about, and Mike, if you'll explain to them. It's like less than a quarter of a mile that's public, the rest of it is mine, and it only goes to my property.
There's no, there wouldn't be no landlocked situation.
There's none.
I'm saying, if, if, if anybody contest the road. If any, that's what I'm saying, someone could come and get that, even the mayor here might say, hey, you know, it, it, we gotta do it the legal way.
Yeah, you gotta do that way, we, we have to put a sign out and.
I don't mind you doing it the legal way, let's just do it, because my property is.
She just made the motion to do it.
Okay.
She just made the motion to do it.
This is the second meeting, I'd like to move on forward with it immediately.
But we didn't have our attorney out last time, and now we got here.
Your, your vote, we have to run the county.
That's what we just tried, oh my God, you heard what she just said? We voted in to run the county, y'all gotta get that, she just said it. That's what we gotta do, make the statement. Go ahead, a motion. Yeah, motion.
Commissioner Willis, second, Commissioner.
Go forward.
Confirming that the road has no substantial public purpose. And that its removal from the county road system is in the best interest of, uh, the county.
Any more discussion?
Only four.
All in favor? Opposed.
We might agree.
Motion carried.
One more time, how long is this gonna take, that?
Probably two months. I'm thinking, I'm thinking because we've got to have another meeting, you guys don't know this. So, so you have to, you, you do have to do those, I think those two or three things, so.
I, I understand, and I, I'm a little frustrated, because, Lord, didn't I understand that you were gonna call, that Ted Larceny, that he owns some property? He sold that property, so, and you should know that, because you had a confrontation, I'm assuming, with the landowners a couple weeks, she called. They were in concern, because when they got their nine one one address, they informed that you were trying to close the road. They were still issued a nine one one address where their post, uh, their, their mailbox is on Farm Road, so therefore the postmaster has to get down there. Okay, well, right now it's county property, where the mailboxes and all that are, they're on county property, because it's on the county driveway because of the county road. Um, there, and they have access to their land right now off of Farm Road, so technically, they will have to be notified. They do have other access from another road, and they are in the process of building a driveway. But legally, they do have to have written notification, and a public hearing has to be heard, so if anybody is affected by that. They have to come to the meeting as well. And that's why I want Hubert to make sure he came and verify everything. So the board knows the process of. And I understand that, but that Ted Larceny also is, and your courthouse down the road says it has no access to that piece of property. And that you're speaking of, of those people that called. They also, as the ordinance for Scriven County. Cannot get a home permit unless they have access to their property, which they did not. The only place that they, they operated was where the old, uh, road scraper. Turned around, and I had been using it as, as transportation for a tractor over there. No, their, their piece of property that you're speaking of says right here in your courthouse, no access road. Okay, sure. Sure, if you'll bag me up on this, the people that just bought this property, and I have their name and everything, and their phone number, and they're on my desk. Their access to their property, their nine one one address, states Farm Road. Legally, that's their access to their property, if I'm, is that right? It, it, it does, I'm not saying that. That's what I'm saying, like, I, I mean, I don't know, that's just what she was saying, they're in the process of getting another access, but. And I give her permission to go cross there, I did, I'm the one that give her. She also asked about how would they go about moving their nine one one address, so the postmaster wouldn't go down there. So that's what I'm saying, like, this is all the reasons why I, he has to do the process, and that's why, I, because. Right, when they, when they give the address, and if you can, anybody in this room can look that address up, it goes on Highway twenty four. The nine one one address automatically went to Highway twenty four. Now, they changed it since, in the county, down here. The computer has been changed to Farm Road, all of a sudden. But Ted Larceny, the purchase, that sold this piece of property, has no access to that property. And he knew that when he sold it, he just put it on me to deal with it. The property lines has already been drawn out, they're staked out. And that mailbox is on my property, even if you bought that piece of property, and went and set up a house back there, just as they did. You still gotta come across mine, it ain't got nothing to do with the road. You still gotta come across my property, which is about forty five feet, to get to your property. Go find you another road, go make you another road.
So she said that they were actually working on doing another access, so.
Can I allow them two months to get it done?
Okay.
And not come across my property, because the public road does not go up to where they accessing to their driveway now.
Okay.
She does a lot of phone calling, but if somebody would actually come out and look.
I'll come out there today.
And, and be glad to stop and explain it to you, and show you the markers.
It doesn't matter what it is, we don't have authority to close roads today.
We still gotta run it, but I'll come out there and talk with you.
But I, but I'm here, and then a phone call gets made, and it gets altered, and you know, and I'd rather somebody just come awkwardly look at what's going on. One way or the other, and you got my phone number, I'll be glad to come show you. Mickey Michelle is done.
What is your number?
Nine one two six nine oh, oh two five eight.
I'll come out there today.
Thank you. Good work.
So.
Mister Michelle has actually come by the office the other day, and he done, he actually went out there with survey for the big property owners. So, they have an updated survey. You, you understand, okay.
But we gotta go through the channel, man. We gotta go through the proper channel.
It's aggravating, but you have to do it.
Right, right, well, you know, yeah. Yeah, she don't like it, but that's the way it is.
It'll be fine, just so long as we're moving forward, it'll be, we can get it fixed.
Well, now then it just starts the process, that's, I guarantee whether it is or not.
Well, that's right, but you gotta move forward to get to the end of it. So what we doing now, let's move forward.
Have we voted on that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, we voted, we voted, go forward, yeah.
All right.
I don't know, we may.
I can ask you that.
She can, if it can be done, but you gotta, let's just go public comment, here, ready?
All right.
You what?
Now we're looking up the public comment, anything we talked about in a meeting today, change that was on our agenda.
My name is Julia Rogers, and um, on the um, number eighteen, Commissioner Fisher talked about the um, front end load. How often do y'all do we, do we make this money? Weekly, monthly, or yearly, or ever?
Seems like daily lately.
If you, if you do your PM on weekly. If you do PM on weekly, you would catch some stuff. If you do it mu- uh, monthly, you would catch what you miss, what you miss weekly. Then a yearly PM, a yearly PM, you would uh, catch what needs to be, you'll catch the major stuff. In, in, in doing, in doing that.
And here's a daily startup.
You're right, I mean, everything you say, you're correct. Now, what they do, I don't know, I'm not involved in operations at all, so.
I believe that was mentioned earlier, and that was uh. I think, I think it was kinda being put in a way where folks would understand that it's a management issue slash control of the employee issue.
Hold on, Kevin, just state your name for the.
Kevin Hayden, sorry.
Go ahead, I can interrupt your thought.
Somebody mentioned earlier about it being kind of a management, uh, employee issue. Well, if the guy ain't doing a good job, get his butt out, put, put some money up in his place. If they're slow, if they suck at their job, and they're not packing good, if they can't pack good, if they can't do something like that, then get rid of them, and get somebody in a spot. I think that uh, you know, the, the competitive budgeting and uh, you know. Allowing other people to bid on jobs and stuff, I think that's a big thing, I mean, if it's. Yeah, if somebody's guy can do a quicker job, better job, put them in there, but I mean, if there's no training, and there's no PM, there's cause the track, the crap to go down. That's on the management side of this county. I'm sorry, guys, but, I mean, somebody needs to get off their butt and do something about it.
There's an assumption here, that there is no PM, and I don't disagree, the stuff is, but the loaders.
If one of y'all had raised your eyes and gone, mm-hmm.
I agree, I mean, I'm not, I'm not high behind any of it, but it is a, a loader with fifteen thousand hours on it, and I don't know, like. It's gonna get in trouble, I don't care if you maintain it every day, you're fixing to start spending money on it, and it might run to forty thousand hours, but not without.
What is a piece of equipment like that average out in its life history?
I think twenty thousand hours, you're gonna have to pretty much do a full rebuild or, and it depends on where it is. Like, if Michael had one that had fifteen thousand hours on it, probably be in better shape. He would've traded it, where probably we should have, but it is, it is a, you know, I run stuff like that, and it. It's a maintenance thing, but it's also the duty it's doing as well, and there's nothing he, there's nothing clean about trash, it's just nasty from the start to the finish. Like, the equipment all, and I'm not telling you it's maintained, it, as well as it should be, it's maintained still.
I guess my question and concern would be about whether that two hundred and twenty five thousand dollar loader, or whatever it costs, would be. More efficient for us to have a, a local guy running that, a new piece of equipment that was PM, like. The commissioner was saying, um, rather than trying to limp around with an old piece of equipment. Um, rather than trying to limp around with an old piece of equipment because we're worn out at the point that we're considering hiring, hiring some, some, an outsourcing, you know, outsourcing this kind of stuff that we could do if we was spending money on a piece of equipment, because years and years down the road. I just, I.
I feel like if some of us have weighed that option, and I really do think that the option we should go with might be the cheaper one. I, I don't know anywhere to definitively say that, because we don't.
I'd love to see, I'd love to see something about the maintenance contracts with, if anybody is under contract for maintenance on the equipment. Uh, what your, what the person, what, what all this is really costing, like, I understand that the, the numbers that y'all produced are solid. But I would like a copy of it to see kind of what's going on with that, if possible.
Sure. And we've been doing this for a long time, and it just got where, and, and I.
I'm brand new in this room, buddy, I've never sat my butt in this building, not right here, not this room.
It's a pretty fresh room, I've been in it for years.
But I'm fifty years old now, and I'm, I'm starting to get a little interested in some of the stuff that's happening, we got PM software.
And, and we do, I don't want anybody to assume there's no PM, there's no anything, because it is, now whether it's, it's obviously not good as it could be, but everything we do on our county is a, a result of not having, or trying to run our budget as, as lean as we can. I'd say not having enough money. I mean, if you give us another two million dollars operating on, I think we can make this thing work a lot easier. But, uh, that's my argument.
I just wanna say that, I just wanna say that the, the, the impression that subbing it out, I know it's a neat point at this point, but the impression of subbing it out is going to solve all the issues. You do realize that if he doesn't do maintenance on his equipment, he's gonna be in just as big of a predicament as we are. So, he, because, oh, he's not? I mean, if he, if he doesn't do maintenance on his equipment, he's gonna be in the same predicament. I mean, so when it's all said and done, um, you know, it, it's.
We'd rather it be on his dime, than on ours.
Trey, I, I hushed you earlier, and I'm sorry, but it just.
I waited patiently.
Just state your name, just for.
My name's Trey Evans.
He's my brother.
I just want, yeah.
Let's be clear.
The, uh, the resolution that y'all passed where it excluded, excluded the bidding process as per the law. That goes from the day forward, is that correct?
Yeah, sure.
All right, so how about all the contracts that's been awarded from, from the time the law was written up until today? Does that make those contracts null and void because they were issued unlawfully?
Well, what?
Why not? Maybe it works.
Well, I'll tell you what we were told from our legal advice, like what we got, Mr. Reed, has told us that professional services were, were not required by law to be bid. Whether that's the case or not, I'm not telling you it's right or wrong, I'm just telling you that's our work, that's the advice we got from our legal counsel, and.
But he also advised you to change this through the resolution today to become compliant, so you can, you can award contracts lawfully.
I s- I see where you're going, but I don't know the answer.
Why would you change a law that didn't even be changed, for the sake?
I think that five hundred was the red flag to everybody, that five hundred to five thousand.
Right.
Maybe that answers some of your questions.
Right.
I, I would like that being changed, because it won't be an obstacle.
Right, but you know, by the law that's written in the county law, the law is the law. Right, law will be indifferent, you know what I mean? And the sheriff can say there's, there's much, much greater in the law, it's black or white, if you steal the candy bar or you didn't. And, and by passing this law saying that you don't have to require a bid to be compliant with the old law, you're trying to unrob the bank, is my opinion. So, from this day forward, nobody, we don't have the afforded right that the law gave us to provide bids or even participate in the bid process. This resolution pretty much told us that we don't have that opportunity anymore, unless the board so grants it.
But it's, I understood it, as we were told, that was the, that was the way it was before. It, it didn't just change, I think this is a clarification, is, I'm telling you what they were, a clarification of the law that's already.
You were operating under the assumption that the law was like that, but in reality, the law wasn't like that. So that's why the resolution came about, I'm just trying to use the clarification.
I don't know about the reality, it wasn't. This is just here to clarify, uh, whether it was or not.
But before, the board had the opportunity to bid not to bid. Y'all had a, y'all had the opportunity to vote not to bid something. You completely changed that, and now the only way that the community or anybody else can have an opportunity is if you so allow it. You took what we had to begin with, and now you made it a privilege. Understand that that's got to be granted by the board.
I don't, I agree with it, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think the privilege was, had to be allowed before. I mean, if the board decided whether to bid it or not, it was just, I don't think it changed much, I really, it changed the intent kind of, but I don't think it changed actual, how it actually worked. I really don't.
Oh, I understand, yes, it's worked the same for the last thirty years.
And I don't think it's gonna change.
We all know that. I was just saying that, since it's come up, you know what I mean, and, and there's been discussion about, hey, I'd like to see it, you know, everybody have an opportunity, no matter who it is, it don't matter.
Yeah.
Um, but now y'all pretty much squash that with, now we'll let you know if we're gonna allow you to bid, kind of thing. Pretty much, that, that solidifies sounds.
When you put it that way, it sucks.
Yeah, it, it's solid, it's.
That kind of.
It's the last nail in the coffin for the monopoly that was created.
Well, I had, um, something, I, 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 uh, like, too. Um, I'm Laura Mills, a lot of the names are difficult to pronounce, I'll be your talk. You personally or your children or your grandparents, um, I'm certainly not here as a representative of this school system, I only said that to give you the context of what I had typed out to say. Um, I really didn't plan on saying anything, but the past twenty years, I feel like I need to defend my kids, my students. They have told me that the general consensus among them is we have to leave here to have opportunity. We have to leave, and you know yourself, most of them don't come back, not until they're old and retired. Um, by passing resolutions like the bidding resolution you're talking about, whether it was your intention or not, I think that is completely demoralizing for the general public and kind of a fall in the eye of the American dream, just to be dramatic for that. And you've prevented interested and qualified parties from bidding, bids you don't even have to be accepted, like Mr. Commissioner Warren said. But now it's gotta go through a lot of additional procedures, including a majority vote from the board. Um, bidding's an opportunity provided by the board, not an obligation to accept, and the burden of preparing the bid is on the people who want to bid. You don't have to do anything except accept the bids to, to look at, not to be committed to. Um, instead, Scrivin County's in a state of decline, people have to leave work, leave here to find work, and, and the kids know it, and the really sad thing is, they plan on it. They plan their futures around the fact that they know they got to leave. Um, by moving out of the county, the county loses property tax, sales tax, the school loses FTE numbers. When I first started teaching here, the science department had nine teachers in it, now we've got five. The, the school system, the year we won the state championship, we had, what, twelve hundred students, eleven, twelve hundred students? Last year in the building, we had a little over five. Okay, I don't know about the other two schools, but we know where I work. Um, but all of those things, those, even the little impacts families have on a community, those all add up. And I just think that Scrivin Countyans of any age, whether they're fresh out of high school, in high school, poor or private, they should have the opportunity to work in a county where they live.
And in nineteen forty-nine, we had a board of commissioners sitting around, probably maybe not this same table, but in, in this building or somewhere, that said the same thing. And they passed that law to give us the opportunity.
But it, it's just very demoralizing for me as a teacher, to see my kids know they got to leave.
I completely agree.
I have a question, my name's Renee Paul. Um, how do we solicit bids? I mean, is, is it put up on a website to?
We don't have it all.
We don't?
Uh, uh, how do people even know that there is the ability to bid on a project?
Well, let's take the roads for instance, we have to bid that stuff because the state says so, so let's just start there. How, how do you solicit those?
Like, if I started a company and wanted to bid on the roads, how would I do that? What is the process?
Lauren, what do you?
Um.
I'll, I'll just refer to her, because she ran the.
The road department, um, their secretary has a bidding list. Anybody that wants to do good on that bid, they have an open list, and what happens is during that bidding process, they send a packet to everybody on that list.
So you would just call up there and say, hey, put me on the list to get the bid?
The packet, yes. Pretty much, or they'll go through and any. So we don't receive any kind of advertisement saying, you know, like, I've never seen, what is it, the, um, Robert? What is that phrase, RB Baker or whatever? I've never seen them.
They don't, they don't like to do.
To destroy.
They don't, they don't.
They don't do small projects, okay.
They're too small.
The, the first thing, so that has to happen, you talk about this package, it has to be a very detailed bid proposal that is prepared either by the county or, in this case, the road department, so that everybody who is bidding knows exactly what they're bidding on. So that you're bidding an apple, an apple garden, a garden. Uh, so anything that goes out for bid has to be so, a bid, a very detailed bid proposal. That's gotta be developed by the county or one of its departments.
But how do other companies find out that they're even offering a bid package?
I don't, I don't be able to. Scrivin County doesn't offer it at all, doesn't, doesn't, I understand it, bid packets for anything, other than the.
Sure. Yeah, we do. We bid roads, I know we have.
We do have a whole lot of stable.
We've done like eight, I mean, I think we've bid. We bid, we bid.
We called everybody that we could possibly think of, we, we called the, the.
At the end of the day, y'all used their material list and everything else, and y'all insourced them.
Uh, tech, yeah. Well, we used, when we called, the guy that sold the bill, who we had actually got a bid from at that time. Um, he gave us, in the beginning, he gave us a materials list, a form that said we needed to have it. Well, then, that's him who went out and solicited bids from contractors, and we figured out, okay, it will be cheaper just for us to just buy the materials and do it rather than. So, no, we didn't take what a contractor gave us and went off materials.
Just like the, the high school out there, when that happened.
So there's no public forum where, where these bids go, it's up to, it's up to whoever is soliciting the bid, they think that these people know about it. But it's not, it's not out in open where.
It's not advertised, I mean, you're talking about, like, modernizing the website, can we put it on the website?
Yeah, you got it right there.
I mean, you know, it's.
A website, a procurement, not the.
But we don't have to do that, no.
Why? But we, oh, because y'all know we do not. We get bids out of that. Stuff that we don't necessarily have to, like, if an air conditioning unit goes out, like, every single.
But we don't have to.
Place around here is called an ass, anytime, that's the big question. We do that now anyway, we don't have to, but we did.
I would say the county would require several bids, because otherwise, how in the heck do you know what the best bid's gonna be?
That's right. And then let's go back and look at some of these projects that have gotten the bids in the past and see what kind of job they've done and whether they deserve to get the bid again.
That's a very good point.
Versus doing it in half, half of the year.
We look, that is done, I don't know if you can, can tell, but like, even on roads and stuff, if they haven't done a good job, sometime we preclude them.
House and Dale is not a good job.
Well, whoever did it, we may preclude them from.
Littlefield.
All right, well, right down House and Dale, man, there's a section that was fixed that is no longer fixed, and it has been less than.
Union Church is just.
Three to five years, maybe?
Three, about three years.
Yeah, but.
Three, yeah.
Union Church was a little different.
That's fine, I didn't say, I said they may have been, I know we do look, because there's certain contractors you deal with that say we don't wanna deal with anymore. And I, I mean, it's just, so to your point, I do think that's done some, maybe not all the time. And sometimes it's hard to find contractors that have come on road projects, not a lot.
Well, when they don't know them.
Point taken.
I just don't understand why we don't open it up to the public, put it on the website, you know, hey, we're taking bids up to this point, and if you get five people or thirty people, at least you've got some options.
Sure.
And you give the locals the chance to bid on it.
I think we've been painted today as, as a board who don't accept bids and not interested in bids, and I don't think that's the case.
Well, I think that resolution scared all of us.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's. Well, you just have to.
You pretty much just shut down.
You just remember, twenty years from now, if y'all are no longer on the board, another board's gonna operate under that.
I agree.
Decisions y'all make now are gonna follow, carry forward, and other boards
Or be. That's right.
will operate under that, so think about it long term, like, if you decide, you know, I'm gonna be accounting commissioner and you start a business, you're not gonna be allowed to bid on projects in Scrivin County because of things you passed.
Well, there's got to be incentive for people to want to stay here and raise a family here, and work is that incentive, and that's why I'm here, I got a job at the high school in nineteen ninety-nine.
Well, I'd like to change specifically, um, let, I, I don't want to bring that issue up about the, uh, public comment portion of the meeting, and also about the agenda itself. Um, I think it is, um, very lacking on the board's abilities, or they shouldn't be able to do to get an agenda out several days in advance where the public can know what they would perhaps want the comment on. And I don't see why, and maybe y'all should consider following suit, like some other counties, and allowing a public comment on what's on the agenda before you take up the, the actual business that's on the agenda. I know in, I know in Eaton County, they, they allow public comment before they get started, so people can express, I mean, we're all sitting here expressing how we feel after y'all have already done what you're gonna do, so how do you think that makes us feel when we go home?
That's a neat point.
It's a very good point.
They're not serving us, they're serving.
But I, I do wish something that could be considered, and, and incidentally, I also he gave some incorrect information to that lady, the woman that wrote, uh, Farm Road is a dirt road, and he stated that it could be sold off by the county, and y'all were wrong to let him tell her that the county owns that road in itself. That's not the truth.
Right. If I don't know, how am I wrong to tell you?
You, you know that's not right.
Well, I know she's up here and she said, I own both sides of the roads, I can close it, and you and I both know, if that were the case, I mean, you'd both close plenty of roads, that we on both sides of it.
How much other ill-advised information are we getting from him?
I don't know, I, when I tell you I don't know, I don't.
I got the law and that regulation, and I wish you had both of them.
Fine, at any point, I, I don't disagree on any point that you just made. But we can change whatever, Rob, I really do think.
I would like, I would like to see the public comment changed on top of the board vote.
But what, but what we can allow is every time we bring up something, we have fifteen minutes of public interjection in there, it just.
Why not?
But I think what he's suggesting is, is allow the public comment first, so you can address whatever issue we're here for.
One section, one section. If I wanna comment on the bids, I can get up and comment on the bids, if he wants to comment on closing his road, he can get up and, or, you know, if, 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 if that's on the agenda, if it's on the agenda.
So move the bottom to the top.
Move the bottom to the top, I mean, at least.
But I disagree with on every, every time we bring up a number five, whatever it is.
No, no.
End of the meeting, for anything done.
That's not what other counties do, some other counties.
Move the comments from the end of it to the beginning.
They combine, if you got something, if there's something on the agenda and you wanna talk about it, you're your chance.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's a problem, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem moving from, letting opportunity to speak before we, uh, sign the vote on anything. And I don't think that would be a problem, uh, Lauren, by moving that to the top, uh, I mean, that's just my opinion, uh, it's the vote to see whether they wanna do it, do y'all have a problem with it?
I'm not a problem with that.
I'm a problem.
And, and no problem.
We get the agenda in a reasonable amount of time.
Well, she gets it out.
You said the website thing.
Was, was reasonable.
Yeah, was reasonable.
Not the day before.
The Monday before the meeting, I mean, the Monday before the, the, I mean, in advance.
She gets it, she gets it out on Friday, she usually gets the agenda out on Friday when we meet on Tuesday.
I know there's been several instances when I've tried, I even called at the last, one of the last meetings, I can't remember if it was the, uh, I think it was maybe the Bayland meeting. I called about the agenda, and it was like lunchtime on Monday, the day before, and there was no agenda.
No, then somebody, you called the wrong office, because they have the agenda the weekend of the Friday before.
Mister Dixon, didn't I call you and ask you about the agenda?
Which time?
Uh, it might've been a couple of months ago.
Have y'all ever, have you ever gotten your agenda?
You looked on your computer and you found the agenda, but it was not available on the public website.
It was like two months ago, something happened. And you were, you were, you were.
I don't remember, but if you said like.
No, the agenda's always been on Friday.
I mean, I wouldn't tell you wrong. I don't remember exactly, you remember the month?
I have a question, Alan Stewart, could, you know, what time on Friday, because. I have a question, Alan Stewart, could we, what time on Friday, because?
Well, I mean, that really just depends. I called all of the commissioners and I try to wait until they respond to me, um, to, to see if they have anything. But usually, by two o'clock, I'm completely done at the latest. I like to be done by around noon. Um, but it just depends, once I start calling and stuff like that.
Michael, I think if a, a citizen wants to be put on the agenda, what, they have three days?
Uh, yes.
So I can't see where it's practical to have an agenda any sooner than three days before the meeting.
Well, I think three days would be fair. I mean, it's not, it's not being three days, and I have a sense of knowing what office I've called.
Yeah. Um, I just wanna make a, I just, I just wanna make two comments. One, the agenda he's referencing is the one in May. Because I have a screenshot here where, um, May the tenth, and I think that meeting was on May the eleventh, actually, if I can get it wrong on that. But May the tenth, um, the agenda wasn't up, so I, I think it was late that night.
It wasn't up on the website? Okay, well then that is Commissioner Love that puts on the website.
Okay, so then the next thing I wanna say is, is as a commissioner, one that does her own homework. Um, I would like to, I honestly, I would like to be able to have the agenda the Monday, like a whole week before. So I can look over stuff and if I have questions or if I wanna.
I don't think I will be able to do that.
Well, it's not a whole agenda, but.
Put a proposed agenda out.
A, a, a proposed agenda.
Some of the information that you have.
Yeah.
Because there's things that are in this agenda right here, guys. With all due respect, the morgue, I didn't know anything about it till Friday afternoon when I got, when I got it, I didn't know anything about it. Y'all know about it for, for weeks. Like, y'all know about it for weeks. The consideration to fill the board.
They didn't know about it.
How you, how you mean?
What about the Friday?
The Friday?
Because Mr. Strickland just came in last week. He had brought it to me after the last meeting and asked. And I said, well, I will talk to them about it at the next meeting. I actually talked to it with the budget committee and asked them.
Oh, yeah.
We'll do it. So then I was gonna put it on, and then he asked, I think it was Friday, was it Thursday or Friday?
Right.
Then he came in and said, I wanna be put on the agenda. I said, okay, we'll fill out the board, I'll put you in as an appearance.
So we may need to adjust some, some, some procedures or whatever, but.
Hold on, let me finish the public here in a while, since we're talking. Any other public discussion, sir?
I was talking.
Ben Camp, I got a question. This has been almost a year and a half now. Are we any closer to getting a county manager?
We have an interim manager right now.
I know, but are we gonna hire a actual county manager anytime soon? Is it gonna be run in the paper?
If we decide to do it, yes, but right now.
I don't know about running the paper. But you can't keep an interim forever. Interim is temporary.
We had one for a month, so I mean, it hasn't been long, really.
You've only appointed an interim county manager for a month?
Maybe two, but last week, I think.
Yeah, but we've been a year and a half since we've had a county manager at all.
I agree.
And your website states she is the county manager. Has that been official?
She's the interim county manager.
We, we don't see interim on the website.
Well, the website's incorrect.
Yeah, we're moving on.
So, like I said, are we gonna hi- are we gonna announce that in the paper?
So she's not a commissioner?
Yeah, I'm not a commissioner either on the website, am I?
No, you're not. Mike McBride's still there. But, uh, are we gonna run that in the paper and give people opportunity or?
To what? Be kind of.
To apply.
To apply for that position.
There's a job opening. I mean, if we get to the point that we have a job opening, I assume, I don't know about in the paper, but we ran it last time.
Well, why ain't there a job opening if it's just being temporarily filled by an interim county manager?
Well, we may make Lori the county manager.
Why haven't y'all done that already?
What?
Go ahead and make her the county manager. I mean, instead of doing the interim thing.
Well.
What's the, I'm, I'm just curious as to what the purpose is.
Well, you, you, you. Right now she's on training.
Right, some personnel. We wanna show you, you know, you gotta go, she, she dealing with the school, ACCP, going to classes, call, right, that's a lot to deal with, dealing with county manager. You gotta be able to deal with people, you gotta be able to talk. I can talk to you one way, but I have to talk probably my, the different way, you know what I mean? It's, it's a lot dealing with it. I mean, I was in management for fifteen years. We can't talk to everybody the same, can't do the same. So we're gonna have to get some training in that, and we think when we feel like that's good, if she meets the qualification or what we want, that's what we would do.
Well, we all, that was a rhetorical question I brought up anyway. I already know who's hired, who's gonna be hired for the county manager.
You already know that?
Yeah, I already know that.
Well, we're not running.
I just, I just like, um, there'd be, um, everybody to be on the same page and be clear. Y'all only got to bull crap me around. I know who's gonna be the county manager.
You don't believe in promotion, promotion?
I believe in qualifications.
I do, too.
And this is a big county, one of the biggest in the state of Georgia. Who deserves, as, as a taxpayer and resident of this county, lifelong resident, you know, I believe, I speak for the people when I say we deserve. The most qualified person we can get in all positions.
You and I will not disagree on that one.
Go forth taxing a little bit, get the best of it, man.
No, we just take back in our trash and do it the right way.
Yeah, get back to minimum.
I know, I know we do, we bid out our jobs.
Anything else, some, any other company.
See, we know that it's not always, like you said, you know, y'all are out for what you think is best for your constituents, because it clearly wasn't the case this morning. When y'all passed that resolution earlier, as you can tell by just this room.
We got, we got thirteen thousand three hundred, that's massive.
No.
You got about twelve seats on this side of the room, four people felt like they had to pick up. That's a hell of a dagum percentage, right, on people not satisfied with what happened here this morning.
It benefited one person greatly.
I just.
And he's not here anymore.
He's gone.
Well, Ben Wall.
Ben Wall.
And that's another thing, you know, he got, Ben Wall found a way to get in this county one way or another. And, and where was that bid?
That's exactly right. It's a red conflict with the will of this county that stood up and pushed back.
And I'll be honest, you know, I don't like the man. So I didn't want him here. I didn't trust him after all this landfill is, issues. I didn't like the man. He threatened me with a lawsuit and I told him to bring it on. You know, you ain't gonna get nothing out of me. But, but here he is, you know, and we all know, there ain't no point in lying about it, that it was suspicious, very suspicious that he canceled. His plans on the landfill the day of the, where it was supposed to be decided on. And I don't even care, I know what the reason is. I don't, I don't care to hear anybody else's excuse on that, but he got his, he got his way, he's here.
Any other public comment?
I bet you can't with that.
No.
We all, we all.
Any public comment? Any other business? Any commissioner report?
Got the budget stuff coming up. Couple of conferences.
Ms. Baker, our meeting.
It's on June the seventeenth at nine AM. And then we, that's the public hearing for the budget, and then we will let the budget presented for adoption on June the twenty-fourth at nine AM. Um, Truman wanted me to let everybody know that they're gonna post the fourteen U boys district one tournament starting today. Um, at the red department, and in the week of June twenty-seventh through the twenty-fifth, they will host the state baseball tournament for twelve U boys. Uh, and then, just a reminder, Kids Driven Beautiful's hosting an electronic recycling drive-through. It's gonna be this Saturday from nine to twelve. It'll be in the back park, a lot back here behind the community, um, amphitheater, this is what we call it. Um, so if anybody's interested in bringing any electronics they wanna recycle, that's there. And I also received a letter from.
Can I, can I take, can we bring cell phones, like old cell phones? Or is it got computers and, and printers and stuff?
I think so. I think you can bring cell phones, as a matter of fact.
I'm sorry, I, I just didn't.
Yes, cell phones, I do have a list if you'd like a copy of the acceptable items or anything. I have that list that they gave me as well. So, yeah, I would just make sure you factory reset them all.
Is that written in the paper so everybody knows?
She did, she had everything. Um, we're gonna post it on, um, the Facebook after today. And then, of course, if y'all want copies, we've had copies of this up front today to get out.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I received a letter from DOT, um, a bridge replacement project that's coming up. It's gonna be on, um, Buck Creek Road. The replacement and the construction of this bridge is gonna take anywhere from nine to twelve months. So they sent us a letter to solicit any issues, and also we've had a letter that's been sent to the sheriff's department, it was sent to the fire department, nine-one-one, EMS. All the different emergency safety stuff, so that they would know to detour during that time and stuff like that. So if anybody's interested in that map or anything, I do have that available. But I just wanted to know if we had anything, um, if we were opposed to it in any way, I mean, but.
No, the bridge is busy.
Bridge needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed. So, and that's kinda what I told them. I told them if there was any, you know, response today, I'd let them know, but, you know. If they're gonna fix our bridge and it's not costing us, let them fix the bridge.
Absolutely. What, what other bridges they wanna fix?
That right?
What about Mill Haven?
Make the level of your barriers going lower.
Um, that's it.
Any other business coming forward? Well, it was time to turn.
Thank you.